Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. Where's Marty? Marty, let's go.
They want to finish cross-examining the traffic act who's not here. And then they have a planner, but they don't want to put their planner until they finish cross-examining their application.
Who are you talking about, the objectors?
Yeah, so we're just going to get through site visitor comments and their planner.
And cross of their.
And questions for the planner from the audience. Where's my agenda? Okay, Francine, you ready?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning board meeting of April 16th.
Call me order, call meeting to order.
I hereby announce pursuant to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act that adequate notice of this meeting has been transmitted on January 14th, 2024 by the Board Administrative Officer to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, the Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meeting room and in the entrance hall in Town Hall, all pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Roll call.
Mr. Berkeley.
Online.
Just for the record, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Giampolo are present via phone. Ms. Campus.
Here.
Ms. Gerhard.
Here.
Mr. Luciani.
Here.
Mr. Marzolak.
Here.
Mr. Orfanipoulos.
Here.
Mr. Giampolo.
Here, online.
Thank you. Ms. Castellum.
Here.
And Mr. Friggiola is absent. Thank you.
Okay, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing to honor our military, police, and first responders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the hearing, we're going to get the two minutes approved and out of the way. So which is the one, oh, one is from the site visit and one is from the last meeting.
Minutes for April 2nd.
That was a regular meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, so did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Any comments or corrections? Can I have a motion?
I gave my comments to Arena.
Okay, Arena, did you get Jason's comments?
Yes, that was comments in regards to the site visit, which was already incorporated.
Okay, can I have a?
I would advise to do them separately since different board members are eligible to vote.
So who's eligible for the fourth, the second, I mean?
Mr. Berkeley, Ms. Campus, Ms. Gerhard, Mr. Orfanipoulos, Mr. Marzola, Mr. Luciani, and Ms. Castellum. So I would need motion and second, please.
Okay, so we roll call that, please?
I just need motion and second first.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 2nd, 2025 meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
Jean, roll call.
Mr. Berkeley.
Yes.
Ms. Campus.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhard.
Yes.
Mr. Orfanipoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Marzolak.
Yes.
Mr. Luciani.
Yes.
Ms. Castellum.
Yes.
Okay, April 5th, that was the site visit, right?
April 5th was a site visit for Andrews Management Zoning Board Application 2023-10.
Okay, did anybody give any corrections to you? Are you okay?
I just have one comment on that one. If we can maybe just remove the note that says it was recorded.
That's correct, yes. That will be removed. Thank you.
And Francine and myself weren't at the actual onsite, but we visited at a different time, which we'll talk about later. So just go ahead and down the roll call, please.
Motion and second.
Motion, I'm sorry. Motion, one of you guys who worked in the meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 5th site visit.
Second.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berkeley.
Yes.
And Ms. Gerhard.
Yes.
Mr. Marzolak.
Yes.
Mr. Luciani.
Yes.
Ms. Castellum.
Yes.
And Mr. Orfanipoulos will be in. You said you visited. You can abstain.
I'm staying.
Thank you. So minutes for April 2nd and April 5th, 2025, were successfully approved. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started with tonight's witnesses that you have, we want to do a review of our onsite. A few board members were at the meeting.
Zoning Board of Adjustment 2023-10, Andrews Management Group LLC 125-127 Red Hill Road, Block 21, Lot 4, and 4.01 R40A Zone, D1 Use Variance. Bifurcated application seeking a D1 Use Variance to construct two three-story medical office buildings in the R40A residential zone.
Okay, thank you. So as I started saying earlier, before we start the testimony for today, I would like to have, hear from the board members that went to the onsite. Two members, I think, righteous Francine and myself, were not there, but we went at a separate time. I was there the Friday before, and I don't know when you went.
I was there Sunday, April 6th.
Okay, so let's go down the line, ask each board member.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, we have the plan that, up on the screen, that was given to everybody when they did the site visit. I don't know if that was ever marked, but you may or may not be referring to it as part of your summaries.
Do you want to mark it?
We left as A5, last exhibit from the last meeting.
Right, so this will be A6, and I'll have our engineer identify it so that the record's clear.
Is this, is this new? What's the date on this?
So the revision date on this plan is 11/20/24. This is a marked up.
So it's marked up with from the site visit. Okay, so that's fine, because I was not at the site visit. So, but it sounds like I don't need this. So, okay, just making sure.
Yes, and this was simply a color-coded legend to give a frame of reference of what you were seeing out in the field in terms of red stake, for example, delineates the building corner, and so on.
Okay, got it. Just double checking. Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, so Jean, you want to start with any comments or observations that you made at the site? You're going to have to get closer to your mic.
My only, well, I had a few observations. One was that the, that the building was closer to the parkway than to the residential areas, which was good. Seemed like there was a lot of room between the buildings and where the residents were. I was a little concerned that the driveways, though, going out in the Red Hill Road were kind of not that far apart. But other than that, you know, it was good to see the overall layout.
Yeah, overall, I was satisfied with the modifications that have been made based upon our comments. And I thought it was a thorough visit, and it was worthwhile. Appreciate it.
I agree with Jean's statement about the placement of the buildings being closer to the parkway. I wouldn't have liked to see the height of the building. I don't think that there was the balloon there. So a little concerned about how high these buildings are going to be, but no other comments other than that.
Okay, so we'll go to Jason next over the phone, and then John when Jason's done.
If I, some of my comments, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you guys hear out there? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I can hear you. Yep, so I appreciated the, you know, hearing us about moving the septic tanks. I think those are probably in the best location possible for this property. I do also was concerned, though, about not seeing how tall these buildings would be to the neighbors surrounding property. But I also did get a good perspective on the, I guess, they're called berms. The berms that kind of like are kind of round mounds that will come up about four feet, I believe, with trees shrubbery around that. So I also thought that was good. And those are my three comments. Again, the septic tanks are good, the berms. Appreciated that the applicant listening to us. But I still do have some concerns about the height of the two buildings. I don't know how that will be viewed by the existing neighbors. That's all I have.
John?
Yes. In general, I share my comments. I concur with the comments already expressed regarding my concern about the height of buildings, particularly also in regards to how that may impact houses that are located behind it.
Okay, is that it? John?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess I'll let you go next, and then I'll be last.
When I went there, what I'm leaving with, with my concerns, which I think so my other fellow board members feel, is the height of these buildings. I am concerned about that. And I am concerned about the traffic in the driveways. And I could tell you, I was there on a Sunday, my daughter was driving, not me. We had a hard time getting out of that driveway with the traffic coming off the highway, coming over the ramp, and the sight of those driveways. Plus, there was nobody coming out of MSK at that time. I can't imagine what that'd be like if somebody's across the way trying to get on that highway while we're trying to get out of those driveways. So I am really concerned about the traffic situation now.
Laurie?
Okay, to address the issue about the height, even though there were not supposed to be any questions, I know this issue came up because I happened to hear it. My understanding is the balloon that was set up for the height blew away. When we got there on Saturday, in fairness, it was starting to rain, and it was freezing cold that morning. I don't know why. It was April, but my understanding is the balloon blew away. There was supposed to be something there for height. It was there, and it was not there when I got there Saturday, but there was an effort. I too am concerned about the height. The reality is it's hard to picture when you see the houses, but you can't see any buildings there. So I do think we're going to need to address the height issue at some point again, and perhaps in a better weather day or something like that. Everything else, I would agree with everybody. I think the accommodations that were made based simply on our suggestions, I appreciated. I noted that the septic tanks were moved from the original plan, and the building seemed to be closer to the parkway.
Okay, I went to the site visit on Friday, which was nice weather, but it still was muddy out there in the field. My boots will testify to that. I did do a thorough walk-around. I have a couple of concerns, and I guess we'll talk about it. I know everybody likes the septic there, and it is better there than where it was, but I'm concerned that it's close to the parkway. And all the vegetation where this, I looked at the yellow marks, and I actually walked over there. You have to clearcut every tree out of there in order to put the septic in. So I'm concerned that it's going to be open, the back of the building's going to be open to the parkway ramp. I don't know how well that is going to be, but that, I don't know if you guys really paid attention to that, but that bothered me. So I don't know about if there's another place to put the septic that's not near the neighbor's property, but that's one of my concerns. The other concern I have is the same thing that you guys already talked about, was the height of the buildings and how that would be viewed from Red Hill Road, the parkway, and also from the neighbors. I also do have a comment, also the same comment Francine had about the driveway. I was there on a Friday, and I had a difficulty time not only getting in, and I was coming over the parkway trying to make a right. The people were right on my back of my tail, and it kind of made me, and then, you know, trying to make that turn there. Now, I know it's only a little driveway, and I'm sure if this gets built, it'll be a little bit easier to get in there, but that was definitely a challenge. And also getting out of there was a challenge. As you said, I can't even imagine. I made a right, because that's the way to go to my house. If I had to make a left, that would have been really difficult. So I know we heard everybody testify about the brakes and all that, but it still was a little nerve-wracking, because once you commit yourself to go there, the cars are coming pretty quickly, and you almost have to say, whoa, you know, and stop in the middle before you went all the way over, because somebody would hit you, because they're coming over the parkway pretty fast, and you don't see them. Line of sight wasn't too good to what I saw. I walked also along the neighbor's property, and I saw there was some vegetation there. But if we go ahead with this application, I'm sure we're going to need a lot more vegetation there, because the neighbors would have an awful view of that building from their property, seeing those buildings, especially if they're going to be up high like they're proposed to be. So there's almost no way that you really could screen it immediately. It's going to take years to screen those buildings. So I'm kind of concerned about the view of, from Red Hill Road of these buildings, changing the scenic route along that roadway that's been there for many years. And I don't know how many trees are going to be cut down that are in the front. There are huge amount of trees, especially closer to the parkway. Those trees are definitely necessary there, and you also need to have additional ones to supplement the streetscape. And then also the same thing goes on the berm side. I walked that whole line from the front to the back and saw the berm where it was going to go, and it looks like in a good spot. I wasn't sure how high it was going to be. So that's something that we have to talk about, because I'm concerned with the parking light, the lights from the cars parking going into the neighbor's property, because they did have two buildings that were pretty close to the property line. And I, you know, I walked right up to see how close they were, because it's not shown on this, on the map here. And they were significantly close. I think maybe 30 feet away at the most. So I could see that that berm would be a very important thing to help screen the applicant of their view of the building, if it's even possible to do that. So those were my observations from the site visit. Go ahead, Francine.
Just when I was there, I observed all the vegetation that was there, trees and roots, and a lot had been cut down. But once again, which I think I mentioned, I am concerned about stormwater runoff. When there's not trees there, and instead of impervious coverage, what's going to happen to that water that used to be absorbed into that land? Where is it going to go?
That's a good point. Okay, so that's the board's comments on the site visit. So with that being said, do we need to open up and get comments from anybody else?
Let's go to Sal first.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how you want to handle answering some of the concerns. We could do that as part of our rebuttal testimony after the objectors present their case.
Can Sal speak more directly into the microphone?
Sorry, sorry. But we, just, I know you raised a lot of questions, like the height of the berm, et cetera. We could either present those answers tonight, if Mike's prepared to do that, or we could present it as in response to the objectors' testimony, because we're going to have to bring these witnesses back at some point for that, for rebuttal anyway, so.
Okay, you want to wait? What do you think?
If the board members think some of these things could be clarified now, it may make sense.
That's what I would say.
But we may.
You should hear the rest.
Mr. Simon, are you going to, do you have any comments to make from the site visit on behalf of your clients? Or, I know you weren't there, but do you want to present any observations that your client had?
Because he still has to finish questioning.
It's nothing to do with the.
Site visit only. Come up to a microphone.
You have to get this one up here.
What happened?
Oh, you got a time. We dropped somebody. You got to wait.
Yeah, I'm still here. I can, I'm still there.
So who do we lose, John? Okay, hold off one second. Let him get back up again.
Just observations. They can do it on cross. I just want to give him the. They can do it when they have public questions.
You mean comments at the end?
It's not. His engineer's here. I'm going to ask him. I think he should, he should answer your concerns.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but what if the public observes something that they want to be? How many people in the public went to the onsite that are not represented by an attorney? That want, that want to say something at some point? Okay, so what will happen is, once we finish with this portion, and the engineer starts his testimony answering our questions, we'll give you the opportunity to get up and make your comment or question. Question about whatever you saw there that you need to ask, for the, even though he wasn't there, right?
This is just for clarification issues.
Right, I don't know if he's able to answer questions if he wasn't there. All right, let's, let's. Let's proceed, because he could be watching it on Facebook anyway. Okay. All right, sir. Mr. Simon, go ahead. This is questions from the onsite to the engineer.
Just observations.
Observations, I'm sorry.
Right, so the reason why I came up is typically.
Hi, Jason, we're going to just keep you. Somehow we dropped John, and I'm just watch.
Yeah, he just texted me and said that he got disconnected, so I'm not sure.
Tell him to listen.
Listen, don't talk.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Typically, when it's time for, you know, either the objector's case or public comment, at that time, I would have my clients, to the extent that they want to speak and make comment on the application, would provide their observations regarding, obviously, the site, the neighborhood, and also what they may have observed during the site visit, so that it's not sort of truncated.
You can reserve it for then if you want. If there's anything that could be clarified now, like there was something.
Yes, I would like to have anything that needs to be clarified now for the, for us on the board to know, not at the end.
Reserve those for later.
Okay, I can, while you're doing that.
If someone didn't understand what the, what the red flag was, or the yellow flag, or where the septic was.
You're just going to have to not be on it.
Jason? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
We can't get John back on. So John, if you can hear us, we can't get you back on for whatever reason. Unless, Jason, you want to call him on your phone and put him on there.
Yeah, I can try that. Sure, give me a chance.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I checked with my clients, and we would prefer to. We have no particular, you know, clarification questions, I guess, regarding the site visit, and the comments will wait till the end.
Okay.
He has, he's going to finish traffic, but traffic's not here. So we're going to hold his question note traffic until the traffic.
Yeah, John, you there?
Oh, but we don't have any engineering questions that he has.
John, you're connected through my phone. It was easier for me to call you. So I think John and I are both on back online now.
So the folks in the audience that raised their hand, do you need any clarification on the onsite? Not any comments or observations? It's more like questions about what you saw there that he can clarify, if he can? I don't know who, he wasn't there, so.
But all the comments or questions you've raised, he can respond to, because he designed the site.
Okay, all right. Okay, so come on up with your name and address, and ask for your clarification of whatever you observed.
And you'll have time to do comments later at the end. This is just.
Right.
Clarifications of what you saw.
Right.
Clarification.
Okay, so I was there.
What's your name?
Start with your name and your address. Go ahead. We hear you. Just keep your mouth closed.
My name is William Aurnhammer. I live at 111 Red Hill Road, which is two, you know, one adjacent.
I'm sorry, could you spell what's name, please?
Aurnhammer, A-U-R-N-H-A-M-M-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you for doing this. So I noticed on the plan, it mentions that there's 26% impervious area.
Can you keep speaking into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. So 26, it says on the plan, the maximum coverage is 26% impervious area. Zoning is for 25%, but.
Well, what does this have to do with the onsite?
Just what you observed onsite.
I was, this was getting to me while I was onsite. I'm trying to assess what the impervious area is. There's an inconsistency between that and what is in the latest letter on your, let's see. The name of that company is Phillips Price. There's, they claim that there's 37% impervious. So I'm trying to find out, first off, why are there inconsistencies in a site, in a plan that's being presented? And then what is the actual impervious area?
We can address that later, but if you have a specific question, like, were you concerned where the park was actually located?
Did you hear the comments that we kind of made? Did you have anything like that to bring up?
Well, I agree with some of the assessments, and, but you're asking, if I had any questions.
Okay, I get it.
The impervious coverage, I was there at the site. I'm trying to assess how much of this is going to be.
And it was addressed already, but I think our planner could probably give a summary at some point when.
The fact that they're different?
She'll answer that.
I'll let Kate answer it.
If you just give me a moment, can you state the date on the plan that you're looking at?
Well, this is the plan that was handed to me while I was onsite.
It says 08/04/23.
11/20/24 is the last.
Just hold on one moment. So that's, that's me. I'm Phillips Price. I'm Kate Keller. I'm the board's planner. So let me, let me just double check what you're talking.
And the letter is 12, July 12th, 2024.
There's a more recent letter.
That is, that is the wrong letter.
This is what's up on the website, and I'm trying to assess what's going on here. And this is on the Omdell's website. So how are we supposed to understand the facts when they're inconsistent?
Well, it's not inconsistent. I, yes, the most recent letter that I had is dated 2/12/25.
And do you state the impervious area there?
Yes, I work for the board. I'm not working for the applicant, just so you know. Yes, yes, we review, the plans were changed over time, and we update our letter to reflect changes to the plans.
Okay, so I will have to look again, but I did not find that letter.
You have to go on the website. Everything's up to date.
Everything is on the website. I'm actually checking now.
Okay. She's our board secretary. If something's not on there, it's her job to put it on there, so she'll take care of it.
Yes, and, you know, you wouldn't know that, but if it's, if something's not on the website, you can request it directly from community development.
She'll get it up there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now we're.
There was one more later?
I think there was one more, right? No, no, she didn't, she's not saying anything. Okay.
So, so.
Go ahead, now it's up to you guys.
I had a couple, well, first of all, introduce yourself so the record's clear.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Michael Wazalaski.
And you were the engineer that testified previously, and you understand you remain under oath.
That's correct.
And for the record, our board professionals were sworn previously still under oath.
So there were a couple of questions. First, will you, I outlined a few of them, so why don't you run through responses?
Sure, so I'll start with the landscaping berm on the bottom of your plan, or the southwest of the property. We're anticipating that to be a six-foot height, which would block the view of, if you assume a typical car headlight, to your point, is an average of three to four foot above grade. That would directly hit the berm. We'd also envision that that berm, excuse me, would be planted with largely evergreen vegetation, particularly along the highest points to provide additional screening in terms of its maximum height. Regarding the location of the driveway, we intentionally located that about as far from the parkway as possible to maximize the time and spacing between those driveways. I don't want to dive into that too deep without our traffic engineer present to further discuss the issue. The location of the septic fields, when we, we heard your request, and we looked at the plan to see what would be the most appropriate location, and we felt that where they are now, between the buildings and the parkway, is the most appropriate. Obviously, on this plan, you'll see there's some open space. There's issues and constraints with all of those spaces, namely being, I'll start with the right or north, excuse me, southeast to the right of Building B. If the septic field were to be located in that area, there would be conflicting separation requirements to both the intended bio-retention basin in the front as well as the incoming water lines. That was our overarching concern. So we had placed a septic field for Building B directly northeast of it, between it and the parkway. Along those lines, we followed the same pattern for septic field A. Again, bearing in mind that.
Before you move off septic, there was a concern the chairman, I think, expressed about clearcutting that area.
That's correct. We can look. That's correct, we can look back at that area and see if there's any small shifts we can make to keep some of the larger trees, um, at the expense of the smaller ones, but keeping the largest ones possible. Obviously, to install a septic field, clearcutting is required for the square footage area of those fields.
Wait, so building A, what, what did you, why couldn't you put it towards the rear of the property where it was all open fields? I didn't hear that, I didn't understand what you said.
It's getting, so the, you read my mind. There's a couple of reasons why it becomes prohibitive to move them in that direction. Uh, first, we're planning for an additional land banked, I believe it's twenty-nine parking spaces, and we can't have a septic field under potential parking space areas. And as you move further northwest, the topography of the site increases and it becomes more and more prohibitive to have those fields be upstream of the buildings and further away.
Okay.
And the other question was, what type of clearing and what type of planting is proposed along Red Hill Road?
So that is somewhat to be determined based on a couple of things. First, once we make an application to Monmouth County, they'll ultimately determine what, uh, right-of-way and traffic improvements may be required. Uh, we know that there's an anticipated ten-foot wide right-of-way dedication. A lot of the area where those trees currently lie is going to become county property. If they decide to widen the road, that's happening regardless of anything else happening. That being said, once we develop a full plan inclusive of a landscape plan, we'd absolutely provide buffering along that frontage.
Those were the only questions I had notes on that the engineer could, we can't comment on the height or any of those items yet, but that's all the questions I had, if he missed, if I missed something.
And I don't know if he can answer this, because I know you're not the traffic person, so if you can't, it's, it's okay. You were saying something about the county widening the road, how do we know if that's going to happen?
That will be determined after we make and if we make an application to Monmouth County.
I haven't done it at this point, not for this application.
And also, even if we did, um, they're gonna require a dedication of land, but they may, they may, they have the right to widen it anytime they want. They may not widen it for twenty years, but, um, well, we, all we know they're gonna want is they're gonna want a dedication because they always want a dedication along their frontage.
Is there gonna be any sidewalks up there?
Again, that's, um, well, if the board wants it, we can agree to do it, and we'd have to get the county approved.
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm just, uh, I'm not saying to put them, I'm just asking.
Again, it'd be the county's call. It's the county's call, again.
Okay, so like, we'll find out if that, if this goes further. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a, just a question I might not have heard. I know you said six-foot trees on that berm, on the berm, and then how high is the berm? Like, how high would those trees be with the berm?
The six-foot height was specific to the height of the berm itself, from the bottom of the berm to the top of the berm.
Okay, so it's not six-foot trees on a berm that's higher? So we're talking just a six-foot height of privacy?
Right, with trees on top of that, planted at the six-foot height of the berm.
Yeah, but just, what's the height of the trees you would put?
That will be determined per our landscape plan, typically we specify minimums anywhere from five to seven feet.
Oh, okay, so the berm is six-foot, and then trees are planted in top of that?
Five, right, five feet.
Yeah, Francine, that's something that if they were to get approved here, that would be discussed when they submit a full landscaping plan, at-site plan. Um, because they've, they've committed to the berms, and like the engineer just said, you know, typically for evergreens, um, you're gonna see five, five, six, seven, eight feet height of planting.
Okay, any other questions? Vinnie, Jean?
Um, there was, you mentioned, when you were talking about moving the septic for building A, um, you mentioned something about parking spaces, what, can you just repeat that?
Sure. So one of our prior hearings, we had discussed possibly adding what they call land-banked parking spaces, which is essentially reserving land to add in parking spaces if at some point they're deemed necessary. We don't want to place any other structure in or under that space, so that it's reserved for the parking spaces.
Okay, can you point on the, use the cursor to point where those would be?
Sure, generally, they would be to the left of building A and extending this drive aisle outward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? All right, next witness.
So I, I just want, if I could take...
Oh, hold on a second. What did you? Yes, yeah. Come on up. Some questions.
I, I got it. Um, just, can you just identify on the, on the plan that's on the screen, where this, uh, berm is gonna be located that you testified to, that's gonna be six feet in height?
Tending for it to essentially wrap the, I'll say, bottom and left property lines.
So it's gonna be along the entirety of the, of the bottom and the south and the west property lines?
Yeah, so it'd say southwest and northwest.
And you haven't submitted any type of landscape plan or berm plan to the board?
That's correct.
Okay, nothing further, that's it.
That was quick.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, um, I, just before we bring up our planner, I just wanted to summarize how we got to tonight, just so...
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, so we had our first hearing September fourth, at which time the applicant and the engineer testified. No cross-examination. Then Septem- at second meeting in September, the engineer again testified, no cross-examination. Then in December, our engineer could not be here, so our traffic engineer testified and was cross-examined. Um, in February, we completed the traffic, the, the engineering testimony and the traffic testimony at that point, and they were both, um, cross-examined. After that meeting, um, at the request of your traffic engineer, our traffic engineer, um, submitted, and we submitted a date of March twelfth, a, um, a copy of the, the, the study that he did about other medical buildings in HomeDel, which we submitted to the board and to council and to the, um, your traffic engineer. Our traffic engineer is in Jackson tonight on another application I'm involved in, so he could not be here to at least answer questions, because his testimony's been finished, completed, so if he comes back, and I'm assuming, uh, Mr. Simon's gonna want him back, his testimony's gonna be limited to this supplemental submission that was made to the board, and then he could be subject to cross-examination on that. And then we had the site visit, which we all know about, um, and we're here now tonight to present our planning testimony. Just by way of, to comment about the height, uh, we had a discussion with the applicant today, myself and the planner, and the, we're gonna withdraw the request for a height variance, so we will not seek a height variance. The planner will discuss that in her testimony, so you understand what that means. Um, but they, we will not, we were around forty-five feet or so we were proposing, that variance will not be requested.
So...
So, here I go again.
Yep.
Not technically a variance, but there, but you, so, so we'll let Christine put her testimony on the record, we're just gonna want to hear what the height is proposed to be. So, again, for the board, just, you know, the height was something we were gonna look at in the whole context of the proposal. Um, but, you know, we'll, we'll hear from their applicant's planner, what the, what the permitted is in the zone, et cetera. Because, again, because this use is not permitted in the zone, there are not bulk standards associated with it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna now call Christine Cofone, our planner.
Just wanting to swear, or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Just state your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. I'm testifying as a licensed professional planner. Uh, my business address is fifty-two Reckless Place, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one. I am the principal and owner of the Cofone Consulting Group. I have been providing testimony in the state and a practicing land use planner for twenty-nine years now. I've been qualified here in HomeDel on many occasions, as well as in excess of four hundred and fifty or so other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current and valid. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. In addition to that, I am a court-appointed special adjudicator for affordable housing matters in a couple dozen communities. And my firm, while the balance, the, the bulk of my practice is appearing before planning and zoning boards on behalf of applicants, my firm does represent the Casino Redevelopment Authority down in Atlantic City, where we function as the reviewing planners there.
Just for clarification, you said you represented, you came and spoke in front of boards, but not zoning board, planning board, I presume?
Oh, I think I've been before the zoning board here, too.
Yeah?
Yes, definitely.
You remember?
The self-storage facility.
Okay, you're qualified, except you're disqualified.
The self-storage facility, I think, on the highways are ours.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a few here in years.
I believe, I believe Mr. Simon wants to challenge you, if you imagine.
Do you, do you want to challenge him?
I'm very familiar with Ms. Cofone, and I would not challenge her.
Okay.
That would be interesting, as he uses me as an expert witness on his cases.
Before you start your testimony, Kate, how do you wanna, do you want to start with your letter that you wrote in response to what you saw, or do you want her to do the testimony and do the letter later?
I think we can just let, um, Ms. Cofone just go through the test, her testimony. Um, you know, we, she, you know, will, will go through the variances that are required. Um, I think it'd also be helpful, because there are some changes, as they just mentioned, regarding, you know, what the proposal is. Um, and then, you know, we can, you know, the board can ask questions, I, I will ask questions if needed, and then, um, I can also provide some clarification to the board again afterwards. You know, I know sometimes we do that, after the planning testimony, sometimes you do it before you deliberate. I think, given the length of these proceedings and the fact that we're not gonna get finished tonight, um, you know, I, I would be, I would be happy to, you know, speak to the board tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, let me go for it, Christine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We're ready to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess I'll start with the building height to get that out of the way, because I'm not gonna be testifying as to the D six, because as Mr. Alfieri indicated, we're gonna withdraw that request. So it's our intention to comply with the building height requirements of the R forty A zone where the subject property is located. The way you define building height here in HomeDel means, building height shall mean the vertical distance from grade plane to the average height of the highest roof surface. There is, however, in your ordinance, a section that we believe that we can take advantage of and intend to take advantage of. That section is section thirty dash one twenty-six, exceptions. And the way that reads is, exceptions to the zoning provisions are as follows. Height. Non-residential roof...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to do this, but can you speak more closely into the microphone?
Sure.
I, I can't hear you too well.
Okay. Do you want me to go back and reread that definition of height for you?
Yeah, that would be great, I'm sorry, I just couldn't, couldn't hear you.
You gotta have that mic within two or three inches of your mouth.
Better to know now, before we get through too much of this testimony.
Yes, much better.
Now, I think I'll be, just now that I know that that's an issue, I'll just, so just, if you're, if you're having issues and I get too far away, let me know. So the definite, and again, as I said, we're gonna be withdrawing our request for the D variance and any variance for height at this point, as it is our intention to comply with the height requirements in the R forty A zone, which is thirty-five feet. The way building height is defined here in HomeDel reads as follows. Shall mean the vertical distance from the grade plane to the average height of the highest roof service, roof surface. There is a section of your ordinance, section thirty dash one twenty-six, exceptions, which we intend to take advantage of. We believe that that is applicable to the application. And it reads as follows. Exceptions to the zoning provisions are as follows. Height. Non-residential roof peaks, having no functional use, such as storage, office, or retail use, but which are solely for aesthetic and architectural purposes, in addition to roof structures such as elevators, tanks, ventilating fans, air conditioning equipment, solar panels, fire or parapet walls, skylights, cupolas, steeples, as well as flagpoles, chimneys, smokestacks, silos, radio and television towers, or similar structures may be erected no more than twenty-five percent above the height limits of this chapter, or fifteen feet above the height of the building to which it is attached. Whichever is shorter, except that spires, steeples, water towel, towers, and commercial radio and television towers shall have no height restrictions other than to be set back from any property line one point two times their height. So when I read that, I say, okay, the underlying zoning has a height of thirty-five feet. The ordinance restricts you to go twenty-five percent of that for architectural features which have no function. So if we had an attic up there and we were trying to screen an attic portion of the building, and we were gonna use that for storage, my interpretation would be, we would need to include that in our height. So if the height is thirty-five feet in the zone, and say we were going to do a mansard roof or a parapet roof or something above that thirty-five feet, that was solely and only for architectural features that had no habitable space, no storage, no utility associated with it, we could go above the twenty-five, above the height of the zone by twenty-five percent for architectural features only. So, and the reason you do that is because you want to encourage buildings to not have a flat roof, to have nicer curb appeal, so...
Can I ask Kate if she concurs with you?
Um, yes, I do, and I, okay, I, again, I'm going to sound like an absolute broken record here. And Christine, you haven't been here for a few of these, but, so, this is something that has come up in this application, it's come up in prior applications for use variances in the R forty A and R forty B zone in particular. The way this ordinance is written, if you look at it, there, if, if you are coming in here for a use that is not permitted or contemplated, the, the, the bulk standards do not technically apply. So, you know, when I, we, we spoke about this, I spoke to Sal about this prior to, to the applicant, applicant coming in here, I let him know that there's not a D six variance, and like I said, this has come up in prior applications, and I, you know, it's, I'm, I'm doing this pretty much to advise my client as the board, because I think this is correct. This, to be honest, this was brought to our attention by an, um, an applicant several years ago, um, and he was right. He was right, this is, there's a loophole in this ordinance. So while the D six variance is not technically required, and the note, the, the bulk standards for R forty A do not technically apply here, certain other standards apply, but not those, buffers, et cetera. I have advised this board that when they're considering the application, that the height was a factor to consider as part of the use variance. So, um, you know, and I don't want to interrupt the testimony too much, but I, I think that this is, I appreciate this, because I think what, I, I agree with what Christine is saying, and I, this is an interesting exception in the HomeDel ordinance that does not come up that often, honestly, but it is, the, the point is exactly what, what, um, she just said. The point is that you want to encourage commercial buildings to have a more residential appearance rather than a flat roof. So, here, it's a little unique, we're not, it's not taking a variance away, but I would offer this as part of something for the board to consider when considering the whole use variance. That, that we would, this would qualify for this exception, if it were in a non-residential zone or something where it was permitted. So, um, you know, just looking, looking at that, taking that into account. But it does not change the overall D one variance that is still being requested. Um, and so, just, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let you finish, but so, so the idea here is that you're not, not making any physical changes to the building, but, but that the, but that per this exception, that if this were a more, I'm gonna say it, a more normal zoning scheme, that the, um, the variance would no longer apply. So I, I hate to keep bringing this in, but I think it's important to get this on the record because of the fact that this is a unique zone, and that I want everybody to know what they're voting on.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so with that out of the way, then, I will move to the, the planning testimony on what we're here for, which is the use variance. As the board knows, the subject property is located in the R forty A zone. The R forty A zone is a primarily residential zone, however, it does have another, a, a number of other uses, such as houses of worship, that would be conditionally permitted on this site. So there are other uses besides just single-family homes, you could have municipal uses, but it does not allow medical office uses. So what that means is we're here for a D one use variance, and we have a certain burden of proof that we have to demonstrate. We have to demonstrate to you that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. Years ago, at the ICALE, the Institute of Continuing Legal Education, I was on a panel for the elusive concept of particular suitability. That is a term that is not defined in the land use law, nor is it defined in your ordinance here in HomeDel. So when we're talking about particular suitability, you don't have to find that the site is uniquely suitable for the use, and there's case law to that effect. You don't have to rule out that you looked at other sites for it. What you have to find is that there's something about your site that renders it particularly suitable for the proposed use, whether it's the shape and size of the property, the topography of the property. So in this particular instance, I think the board can take notice of the fact that this is a single-family zone that has several hundred feet of frontage on the Garden State Parkway exit ramp immediately... Parkway exit ran, immediately adjacent to a toll booth. So, that, in my opinion, is one of the factors that can certainly render the site particularly suitable for the proposed medical office buildings. And additionally, it's a five-acre site in a zone that requires, you know, much smaller minimum lot areas, and while certainly not unique to the subject property, it is located directly across from the Memorial Sloan Cancer Treatment Center. So, when you look at the site in the context of the surrounding areas, and you look at the fact that we have significant frontage on the Garden State Parkway, I don't think it's a difficult conclusion to come to that a site with frontage on the Garden State Parkway is suitable for uses other than residential and specifically medical office uses. So, therefore, it's my opinion that the applicant meets its burden of proof with respect to the particular suitability. In addition to the particular suitability, we have an obligation to demonstrate that special reasons exist, or the purposes of the land use law are advanced. And they are not unique to Home Del Township, they come right out of the municipal land use law at Section forty, colon, fifty-five, D dash two, and they're identified by letter. Statutorily, to meet our burden of proof, we only have to satisfy one. I think that three are satisfied by this application, at least three, potentially more, but certainly at least three. I think criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare, is advanced. These are medical office uses, medical office buildings, and I, the applicant has several hundred thousand square feet of medical office in his portfolio of uses and has extremely low vacancy rates. So, we believe that this will, I believe that this will promote the general welfare, and that certainly the medical uses are appropriate and, appropriate in this location. Criteria G talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I think that there, this is a five-acre property, there is certainly sufficient space to develop this property here. We are literally hundreds, at our closest point, I believe, to the, to the west, our closest residential neighbor would be about four hundred and eighty feet, and to the south, our closest residential neighbors are about six and seven hundred feet respectively. So, we have a situation where we have the ability to provide what I consider really substantial buffering, and when I get a little further in my testimony, I'll talk about some of the specific buffering requirements in your ordinance, because Home Del actually has a section of your ordinance that deals with buffering of commercial and residential applications. So, it's certainly something that Home Del Township addresses and plans for when you have commercial uses adjacent to residential uses, and we do meet those buffers. So, I think that criteria G, sufficient space in appropriate locations. And criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land. I do think that this is an efficient use of the land. I struggle as a planner to come to a conclusion that using property that fronts the Garden State Parkway is best suited for residential use, and I think that this is certainly a more efficient use of the land. I'm very familiar with the subject property, I've visited it on literally dozens of occasions, I am familiar, I've been to the Memorial Sloan Kettering facility across the street, and I lived in Middletown for decades, so I'm extremely familiar with the area, and I think that, that this is certainly an appropriate location for these proposed med office buildings. I also think the board can consider criteria I, creating a desirable visual environment. I know that you are, you don't have the site planned before you, and we have not proffered an architectural plan, but I'm not, did we submit that architectural plan?
Just a concept.
Did we submit it a concept, and I think it's, it's an attractive building, we are, you know, trying to make it look somewhat residential in character, and we are proposing, you know, a nice mansard roof, so I do think it's an attractive building. I do appreciate the chairman's comment that it will be visible, I think it will be visible from the Garden State Parkway. So, I think if the board were inclined to look favorably on this application, making sure that all sides of the building are treated architecturally the same will be important, right? Because we would want people coming off the Garden State Parkway to enjoy the same curb appeal and architectural views that people would see coming from Red Hill Road or other parts of the property. And I think that that's certainly, certainly something that the applicant can do. So, I think the board could also consider criteria I. Those are four, so you don't, if you, if you agree with one, two, three, four, statutorily, you just need to agree with one of them, and that substantiates our burden of proof for the grant of the variance, but I am citing four criteria A, G, M, and I of the land use law. So, for that reason, it's my, my conclusion that we meet not only particular suitability, but also what's called the positive criteria, or the special reasons for the grant of the variance. So, regardless of the variance relief being inherently beneficial, non-inherently beneficial, we have a burden of proof to also demonstrate the negative criteria is satisfied. And the negative criteria has two prongs to it. One prong being the impact on the public good, which is essentially the area that surrounds the property, the second being the impact on the zone plan. So, when you look at the zone plan here, one of the things that I found was interesting, right? You look, as planners, what we do is, we look at your zoning ordinance, we look at how you're addressing this in other, other, other districts. So, in your O thirty office district, the stated purpose of that, that district, to me, was, at least the planning concept behind it was applicable to what's going on here. Because when I read Section thirty dash one fifty-three-one of the purpose of the O thirty office district, which albeit is not this district, but I think the planning concept behind it is something we can take notice of here. Because the purpose of that district reads, "The purpose of this district is to recognize the changing character and impact of traffic improvements at the southeast corner of Route thirty-five and Laurel Avenue. In addition to continuing to permit, to permit the existing residential uses, this district permits low-intensity office uses in response to the reduced desirability of residential uses at this heavily-used intersection." The O three district further provides for banks and financial institutions in appropriate locations with adequate means of access. So, when I read that, I read that, and I interpret that as Home Del Township looks at that intersection, and again, the intersection they're talking about here is Route thirty-five and Laurel Avenue, as a busy intersection, and it uses the words of reduced desirability of residential uses at this heavily-used intersection. So, again, while not the same zone, the planning concepts are the same, right? When, when we're planning for our communities, we have certain fundamental concepts that we embrace and we employ, and I think that the board can take notice of that, because I think if you look at this site, you could make a parallel argument that there might be reduced desirability for residential use at this, given the direct proximity to the Garden State Parkway for single-family homes. So, and that doesn't mean that the site is, is not appropriate for a multifamily type or a different type of housing product, and again, that's, that's the benefit of the particular suitability arguments, right? We don't have to rule out every other use. We don't have to be what's called uniquely suitable for just this med office use. It just has to be something particularly suitable about the property. So, going back to the impact on the zone plan, there's another concept in planning that planners like to talk about, is fracture versus framing the zone plan. And I'm going to talk about this a little bit more when I talk about the Medici proofs, but the subject property is located in the R forty A zone. This is what I would consider a fringe of the R forty A zone. I actually, we might, well, I shouldn't say I. Our site engineer printed a copy of the Home Del Township zoning map, and we also have it electronically, which he will be kind enough to bring up for you, because that is well beyond my capabilities to do that, so...
Kate, I have a question. Kate, some of her testimony that she's making, do you have, I hate to ask you this, but I'd like you to, you know, jump in there when she's talking about things and either disagree or agree with her, so we don't forget about these things. So, she's throwing out a lot of data to us.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm taking notes. I mean, I, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to offer some comments, you know, I'd be more, I think, I think she should at least get through the negative criteria.
I know.
Yeah.
I know, it's just that I don't want to, because there's a lot of questions that I have that I would want to interrupt her, but I'm leaving it up to you. But if you're writing notes down, you can talk about it.
I am taking notes on what, on especially the ordinance, the ordinance reference, or ordinance she's citing, the purposes of zoning.
And all these things she's reading off, yes.
Yes, so, so, yes, I'll be prepared to answer that.
I'm trying to give you the sections, so that, because I figured you're writing them down, so that you can go back and pull them. If we don't finish tonight, then you have the sections that I'm pulling from, so, if I'm going to read from your ordinance, I will cite the section so that you can pull it.
All good, all good, thanks.
And just so the record's clear, Mike, can you just, into the microphone, identify what the exhibit is, this would be A seven, correct?
That's correct.
Sure, so this is an almost exact version of the township's zone map, with the small exception that, in red, we've identified the site.
So, just...
Can you make it bigger?
So, Chairman, we can make it bigger, and there's also an exact printed hard copy, so the public can be looking at, in front of the dais, there is a very large print of that, that might be easier, at least for the public.
What about us? I need, I need a binoculars to see that.
No. Oh, wait, okay, I wanted to...
Just blow it up, that's all.
I know, I did.
No, but I mean, at that size, it's too small for any board member, right?
I know, it is, it's too tiny.
I know, but I, they're going to blow up the area that we're talking about here.
All right, so that's good, we can leave it there, that, this gets the point across. Okay, so, where you can see, and when, when Mr. Wazalaski says it's an almost exact replica of the zone map for Home Del Township, we did not manipulate any of the zones. All we did was point to our subject property, the subject property on this zone, which, as you can see, is referenced here in site, and then it points to this very small property here, immediately adjacent to the Garden State Parkway, so...
Does everybody understand where that is, board members?
Right, so here's the Parkway, and here's the, it says site, and then here, it says site right here, which is these two lots, right, the subject property. So, one looks like, almost like a flag lot with a skinny piece, and then you have this. So, it's these two properties right here, immediately adjacent to the Garden State Parkway. And this is important for several reasons. It's important, it's important because the R forty A zone is shown in this, now, when you look up here, right, R forty A, residents in agriculture, is this green color of the, the green color. So, anything on this zoning map would be the R forty A zone in that green. So, it doesn't take anybody too long, I would think, to come to the conclusion that there is a substantial portion of Home Del Township that is zoned for R forty A. So, if this application were smackdown in the middle of one of these other R forty A zones, to me, that would be a very different application, because the concept of framing versus fracturing a zoning plan, here, you have a site that is on the Middletown Township border, right, referring back into where our site is. Directly across the site is, that's where Memorial Sloan Kettering is, actually in Middletown Township. Here, we've got the Garden State Parkway, here, we've got the, the single-family homes coming off of Robin, and then, then you have the farm. So, you're, you're sure...
Christine, sorry, sorry, can I just, I said, I said I wouldn't do this, but I think just one thing that's not clear on this, on the screens and on the, the printout, and this is no one's fault except this map, is that the, you cannot tell the difference between R forty A and R forty B. I can, I can tell it when I'm looking on my computer screen, but, like, for example, the property next to it is R forty B.
R forty B, right.
But, and so, I think, I just want to point that out to the board, because this is, you know, especially when you're on the edge of the, of the municipality, but, like, it's like, one is, the R forty B is like a slightly brighter green.
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
You can, but here's why I'm going to tell you why I don't think that that matters so much.
I just want to be, I just wanted to be clear, because I was a little confused.
Why, you just made the point, Potter's is what?
R forty B.
Okay.
It is, but your ordinance at Section thirty dash one twenty-seven is residents R forty A and R forty B, residents in agricultural districts. So, the zoning standards are the same for the R forty A and R forty B, essentially.
It's, it's two and a half acres versus one acre, yes.
But essentially, they're in the same section of the ordinance, they're not radically different standards.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to be clear that it's not all R forty, it's, it's, it's an issue with the map.
It's an issue with the map, but, and the R forty B, I think, is a little bit darker. Hard to see, you can actually see it better, you can't see it there, it's easier to see it on the printed copy, and the R forty B is a little bit darker, but I can assure you that the lion's share of the zoning in the northern part here is essentially all R forty A.
So, what's, what is the zoning right behind the property?
R forty A.
Oh, that's A, so where, where are the Bs?
The R forty B is the two farms on either side of the Garden State Parkway are R forty B, you can see, it's just a little bit darker. The R forty B is a little bit darker than the R forty A. So, the R forty B is, I would say, most of the platted, single-family developments that show the lots are R forty A. So, all of this referring to the area north of the Parkway up here is R forty A, all of this behind the subject property, and then going further here in a westerly direction is R forty A. This large piece right here is R forty B, and then you have more R forty A behind it. When you go over more into the western, this is, this right here, all these subdivisions here, all R forty A. So, there are substantial portions of R forty A zoning in the township. So, and we're talking about the impact on the zone plan, so, I would submit to the board that in a lot of those R forty A districts, this application would probably not be appropriate. I would say it probably wouldn't be suitable for a lot of the R forty A zone. But this particular R forty A zone, in my opinion, is not going to be fractured in any way, shape, or form if the application were approved by the planning board. I think that this is not fracturing the R forty A zone plan here in Home Del Township. So, I think that that's, that's important for the board to consider as far as the impact on the zone plan, because that is one of the burdens of proof that you have to find in the negative criteria, is that there will be no substantial detriment to the zone plan. And when you're evaluating the negative criteria, the land use law does not ask you to hold the applicant to a standard that there be no detriment. The standards, and that you do, is a balancing test, that the benefits of the applications would outweigh any detriment. And you look at the totality of the application, and you weigh the merits of it and the balance, and then you can come to the conclusion. But the standard is such not, is not such that, we have to demonstrate to the board that there's no, no detriment at all.
What about to the neighbors, you didn't mention them at all?
Well, the, when you talk about the public good, that's the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the zone plan.
Right, so I'm talking about the surrounding zones to that property, and there's, you know, numerous properties there, right behind it and to the left of it, or, I don't know what direction that is.
There are, so, again...
So, what's the impact to them?
So, the impact to them is that, to the, I just want to get my bearing, to the north, right, which is essentially behind us, our building is four hundred and forty, four hundred and thirty-four feet to that closest residence. It's, if you go to the northwest, five hundred and two feet. Going in a southerly direction, we're six hundred and eighty-two and seven hundred and fifty-six feet to our, our closest residence, and...
Are you talking about to the property line, or to the, to the building?
No, those are to the structures. To the property line, we're, those, those dimensions are to the actual residential structures.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, at the site plan, and I see a hundred, and it looks like eighty-seven, on my glasses, I can't see. Hundred eighty-seven, and you're saying, from there, it's another, the closest building is how further over?
Four, four hundred and thirty-four feet.
Seems, doesn't seem correct.
Well...
I mean, I saw the barn, the buildings, I don't know what they were, but there were two buildings, they couldn't have been more than twenty, thirty feet away from the property.
Those are barn structures, though, I don't know that anybody's living in those structures.
You don't, you know for a fact they are barns?
They look to be barns to me, I've visited the subject property, they do not appear to be, um...
All right.
...habited by, the, the structures that you're talking about are, right, when you come in off of, when you come in off of Red Hill, they would be to the immediate west of the property, yes, and they would be much closer, but I'm not sure that those are residentially occupied structures.
And then, to the rear, you said it's over five hundred feet?
Five hundred and two from the, um, corner of the one building, and four hundred and thirty-four from the northern corner of the building.
Yeah, because I see two seventy-nine to the property line, I don't have any, any buildings in, in this sketch, is it on another site plan that has these numbers that you're reading to us?
So, we, we probably do have that exhibit, do we have that?
I don't need to know right now, but we'll have to take a look at that.
So, we have an exhibit that shows that.
William, if he could look into that, William?
Yeah, he has an exhibit coming.
William?
And Dimitri, Dimitri, I had a question.
Wait, one second, William, can you, can you verify these numbers that she's quoting on how far the buildings are?
He's got an exhibit, just...
Okay, go ahead, Jason.
So, we should probably mark this and have it...
So, just, I'm curious, you know, I, I, I'm listening to everything the planner has testified to, and my question is, the farm, how many acres is the farm next door to the, the site?
The neighboring property is the farm, I don't know how many acres, I don't know if they have that information.
Would, would we estimate, you know, Kate, possibly five, ten acres?
He's looking, Jason, you gotta wait a minute.
We can, we can get in the tax records, I'll have a way to say...
Based on the tax records, that farm is... Based on the tax records, that farm is about 23 acres.
23 acres, Jason.
23 acres. So based on the testimony that the planner is giving right now, could in the future, that neighbor also make the argument that this farm could be converted, you know, applied for a variance as well, to convert the farm to commercial land use as well?
Anybody can apply for-
It's in the same zone, it's in the same section.
Jason, anybody can do whatever they want to do, or they have to come in front of the board for that? And, you know, we'll treat that as a separate entity if that ever happens.
But does the argument apply, would the same exact argument that the planner's making right now apply to that farm? If that farm wanted to- if they wanted to sell the farm and convert that to medical office buildings as well?
So the same exact arguments really never apply, right? And that's why we, as land use professionals, are schooled that each case needs to rise and fall on its own merits. So when I talk to you about particular suitability, one of the things that I talked to you about the particular suitability of this project was the direct frontage of several, almost 700 feet on the Garden State Parkway. Based on my review of the tax maps and my familiarity with the area, the farm in question that you're speaking about has zero frontage on the Garden State Parkway. So I don't see, those to me are two very different arguments. So I don't see how that applicant comes in and makes the same application that this application makes when our particular suitability factors would be quite different.
Well, they would probably, and I'm not an attorney, but if I was a layperson, I would say they would make the argument that, hey, there's two buildings already here that the zoning board approved, so why can't we put ours right next to it? So I think that's what Jason is talking.
I don't think the board should be judging this application.
That was my comment.
That's what Jason's trying to say.
Well, I understand, Jason, but I don't think this board should be judging this application based on hypothetically what some other applicant may or may not come in and say. I think each application has to be justified on its own merits, and that's why we have, you know, the things that I'm talking about, particular suitability, the positive and negative criteria, when I get to the Medici Enhanced Reconciliation, that is not something that is unique to this application. That's statutorily for anybody getting a use variance. So whoever did that use variance would have to come forward and put those proofs on, and then the board would evaluate and give the testimony the weight it feels. And if, you know, I don't see how someone competently makes the same arguments for a site that fronts the Garden State Parkway for one that doesn't. Again, like I said, the particular suitability. You couldn't use the argument that I used for particular suitability on that application. It's not the same application.
Well, I mean, I disagree with you personally, because whether the Parkway's there, there's still neighbors on two sides of the property. So to me, I look at it as we're changing, we're in a way, and I don't want to use this word, but I don't know what other word to use, spot zoning for that building to go in that spot. And then I could open the door, somebody in the future, if I'm still on the board, who knows, could open the spot for another 23 acres to become that.
But those conclusions are inconsistent with the law.
I know, I got it.
They're inconsistent with the law, those conclusions.
I know, I know.
Yeah, Dimitri, just for Jason's question, I would just add that, you know, I know everyone's human, but zoning board decisions are not precedential for another zoning board decision. You know, every application stands on its own. That's not just something we say. And I agree with what, you know, with what Christine said, is that-
Well, Kate, yes, Kate, I agree with you, Kate, but you know, you- there is opening Pandora's box.
All right, Jason, thank you.
Yeah, I would also just-
We made our point, both of us, and that's it. We'll move on.
All right, I'm going back up you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I understand the point. I just think it's improper and inappropriate, really, to judge this application based in any way, shape, or form on a hypothetical application that could be filed.
I'm sorry, but I always look at the whole picture. And I- anybody can make an argument for anything going anyplace. There's always some way to make an argument. But I'm looking at the total picture of Homedale and what our, let's call, our forefathers have vision for that part of the town. So that's what I'm looking at.
Then you probably don't need a zoning board, right?
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. I agree.
I just want to say, you're using the Garden State Parkway as making a reason that this property should be changed from residential. And I don't think that that, because, and that's the same argument they were trying to get to, that if you put a medical building. But in other words, why does that land that's zoned for R40 should not be considered a good piece of land to stay R40, just because it backs up to the Garden State Parkway?
For the very reason that in your own R30 zone, you state, and these are not my words, but your zoning ordinance's words, in response to the reduced desirability of residential uses at this heavily-used intersection. So in other zones, Homedale finds that heavily-used intersections have reduced desirability for residential uses.
Okay, and if you put your building there, you're going to make it more congested and therefore less desirable for the land.
Well, I think the point that we should be arguing about is not anything to do with backing up to the Garden State Parkway, but the fact that there is a Garden State Parkway intersection there, right next to the property. That's really what you- why you're saying is particularly suitable. It's not, I mean, there's all kinds of homes backing up to the Garden State Parkway. That doesn't make them suitable for something like this. The reason you're saying this is suitable for something like this, and we have to agree or disagree, is that there's an entrance and exit to the Parkway right there, right near where your property is. So it makes the location desirable for people to access it at that intersection. It's the intersection that counts, not the backing up to the Parkway.
So I did say that. I said that, right-
Well, right, but you've been constantly saying about backing up to the Parkway, which I think is irrelevant. It's the intersection part that you ought to be talking about.
And I did say that we're immediately adjacent to the toll booth, so if I- the Parkway toll booth, so I-
Right, and that's what it should be accessing.
So if you think that that should be accessed, and I can certainly elaborate on that, is that this is, it's not just the Parkway and the fact that the Parkway borders us. It's the fact that there's an interchange. There's a Parkway off-ramp right there, and this property is directly adjacent to the toll booth. So it's those things, and again, the board can certainly agree, disagree with my testimony and give it the appropriate weight. But regardless of if you agree with me or disagree with me, you shouldn't be disagreeing with me because of some hypothetical application that could be filed down the road, because that's not really an appropriate consideration, in my opinion.
And I'll just chime in. That's right. You would have to listen to the planning testimony, as well as our planner, as well as I'm sure the objectors' planner, I think they have one. You'll give them all the weight that you think they deserve and make a decision on the testimony, not on hypothetical futures. That's correct. Or else, that's an improper role of you.
Thank you.
And we're about to refer to an exhibit to support the distances that Ms. Cuffone testified to, but I need Mike to come up and identify this exhibit, which would be A8.
Relative to the submitted use variance plan, this exhibit is titled Dimensional Exhibit, 125 to 127 Red Hill Road. And it is a colorized, relatively zoomed-out version of the plan with an underlying aerial image that in red depicts dimensional distances from the proposed structures and the property line to the surrounding structures.
Can you zoom in a little bit more? So when you start telling us about the lines, we could see them.
Now, would this be A8?
Yes.
Do we have that one?
No.
It's being submitted in response to the questions you asked.
Oh, okay.
And Mike, before you walk away, the distances that are reflected on that plan that Christine's about to refer to was something that your office measured, I guess, arrow- I don't know how to say it now.
Aerial?
Yeah. Aerially, is that the correct word?
That's an approximate distance from the proposed structures to the existing-
Right. You didn't go out and physically measure. You just did it through- okay, thank you. Go ahead, Christine.
Okay, so referring to A8 in evidence and going to the properties to our, they're essentially to the northwest, they are- I'm gonna use this. So referring to A8 in evidence and going to the properties that are to our northwest, you can see shown here on A8 is a red line indicating that that residential home is 434 feet from the proposed office building. This, and these homes are at the cul-de-sac of Robin. And then the home to the west of that, or to the, it's actually to the south of that, I believe, is 502 feet from the proposed office building. So that's where we got those dimensions from. And then going to the properties to the south, still referring to A8 in evidence. Right, and I believe the barn structures, Chairman, that you were talking about that you felt were much closer, are reflected right here immediately adjacent to the property line. But what we scaled was this dimension, which is 652, or I'm sorry, 682 feet to the residential property. And then the other prop- this other red line represents a distance of 765 feet to the residential property. So in all cases, these proposed buildings are hundreds of feet away from our nearest residential neighbors, because we did consider the neighbors. Of course, we did, when we were developing the property. The other thing is, in between is substantial buffering and berming. We have a substantial vegetated buffer on our property, which you can see, which will have not only landscaping, but it will have a berm. So I believe we have great effective- the combination of distance and buffering is going to allow, in my opinion, these buildings to exist here with no negative impacts on the surrounding property owners. So that's my testimony with respect to the zone plan. Another thing I want to point out, though, is that in the Homedale Township Master Plan, you are required to make a consistency review statement against all your zoning and your development with the development of adjoining municipalities. And in the Master Plan Land Use Element Consistency for Middletown Township, there's a passage at Section 232 in the Land Use Plan element. And it reads, when you're talking specifically about your contiguous border with Middletown Township, it reads, and I'm reading from the second paragraph up from the bottom, from the Middletown Township section of the consistency review, from your Land Use Plan element, Section 232. And it reads, "Between the railroad right-of-way and the watershed divide, Middletown's Master Plan designates both commercial and residential land uses, and its zoning includes the R45 Zone, which permits one-family and accessory units on lots slightly larger than one acre, and the RTH3 Zone, which permits multifamily and senior housing at five units per acre. There are also a few areas of commercially-zoned land in Middletown along this section of the border. Those, these zones permit offices and research laboratories with a minimum lot coverage of 45 to 50 percent. In general, the permitted uses along this section of the Middletown-Homedale border are compatible, as Homedale permits both townhouses and single-family homes on minimum-one-acre lots. However, the commercial uses in Middletown generate traffic that impacts both municipalities." So Middlet- Homedale, in your consistency review with adjacent municipalities, recognized that there are commercial uses. These zones permit, and again, this is not my language, this is in the Master Plan, these zones permit offices and research labs with a minimum lot coverage of 40 to 55 percent. In general, the permitted uses along this section of the Middletown-Homedale border are compatible. So I don't find where, because this site would have residences adjacent with substantial, I would consider substantial buffering. In my opinion, the buffering that's on this site, I would consider substantial. For office buildings that are gonna have typical office hours, I would consider this a substantial buffer to a fairly quiet medical office building. And I would say that there are multiple points in both Homedale's zoning ordinance and master plan where you acknowledge the proximity of residences and offices, and take no exception to that as deleterious planning. So this, these are the things that inform my opinion that having a similar situation here where you'd have residences, because there are certainly residences immediately contiguous to our property, and have the office building here, I don't see where, just like it doesn't in other zones in Homedale, and just like it was found in your consistency review with Middletown Township, I don't see where that would elevate to a substantial detriment here. So that's my testimony with regard to the negative criteria, as far as the impact on the zone plan and the impact on the public good. So one of the other things you have to testify to is a planner, is the Medici reconciliation. And what the Medici reconciliation talks about is that you have to reconcile the omission of the use, the governing bodies' continued omission of the use from the zone plan, right? And that's why I thought it was important to bring the zoning map here so Homedale, so the board could see really just how much of Homedale is zoned for R40, R40A zoning, and how this site is unique. It's, in my opinion, it's unique when you look at those R40A zones. Because when you look at those zones, they are predominantly what I would consider platted, single-family subdivisions. So they are subdivisions that are cut up into individual homeowner lots, and most of them are not immediately contiguous to a Garden State Parkway interchange or exit ramp, and they are not across the street from a substantial office building. So those, to me, are differences with a distinction. That doesn't mean that we don't consider our residences around us, but I think, and the other thing you said about spot zoning, I don't think that this is impermissible spot zoning. If you were to accept that, then anytime you grant a use variance, it would be impermissible spot zoning. So the test for the use variance is, do you meet the statutory burden of proof with respect to particular suitability, this positive and negative criteria, and the Medici reconciliation. As far as being a rezoning by variance, one of the cases that govern rezoning by variance, that concept, is the Hughes v. Monmouth University case. And in that case, we are directed, as planners, to look at the area impacted by the variance in comparison to the zone in which it is located. That was another reason why I thought it was important for the board to understand how very, very tiny the subject property is in regards to the overall R40A zoning program for your township. Because it is a, what I would consider, miniscule portion of the R40A zone. So this, in my opinion, as a planner, in no way elevates itself to a rezoning by variance. Because if you follow the Monmouth, the Hughes v. Monmouth University case, right, which we know directs us to look at the area of the impacted variance, in comparison to the overall zone that it's located in, it is tiny, miniscule, tiny, and on the fringe of that zone, adjacent to a Garden State Parkway interchange and across the street from commercially-zoned property in another municipality that you found in your consistency review, to not be particularly out of character or disharmonious. So I understand, you know, that there's a lot of interest in this application. The buffers, to me, are critical to this application. Your ordinance, I should have addressed this in the negative, in the impact on the zone plan as well, because the ordinance here in Homedale specifically addresses, and Kate brings this up in her review letter as well, so your ordinance specifically addresses commercial and residential properties, yes. So it's Section 30-54, and it's on Page 4 of Kate's most recent letter, which is February 12th of 2025. I don't recall if it was in prior iterations of her letter, it probably was, but I'm gonna refer to the most recent review letter, which is February 12th of 2025. So her, and again, this is on Page 4 of her letter, it's Comment 5, "Per Section 30-54, non-residential development abutting residential development shall provide certain buffers, including but not limited to, 'A strip of land 20 percent of the average width and depth of the property shall be designated as a buffer area to be contiguous with the residential property line. The buffer area between parking and loading areas and street rights-of-way shall be at least 15 foot wide. Buffer area shall consist of a solid and continuous landscape screen to conceal the parking, loading areas, eliminate glare of vehicle lights throughout, which I heard raised earlier as an issue, and camouflage the building from the abutting residential areas.'" So what this tells me as a planner is that Homedale recognizes and plans for those instances where you will have non-residential development contiguous to residential development. And it doesn't say- And it doesn't say that you shouldn't have this, it doesn't say in your ordinance that this shall be prohibited, and it doesn't say that this is undesirable. What it does say is in those sections, in those areas of development, this is how we feel the buffering should be handled and should be appropriate, and we meet that buffer section of the ordinance. So again, I when you're looking at the impact on the zone plan, I am challenged as a planner, and again, I understand we have residential neighbors contiguous and HomeDell contemplated that specifically in your ordinance. It reads, non-residential development, abutting residential development, shall provide certain buffer areas. So that, to me, says it's important, right, because it uses shall. We know that when you use the language shall, that's not aspirational, it's mandatory. So you've planned for this and you've considered it. So to say in this instance that because we have residential neighbors here, that this is an inappropriate type of development, to me, would be inconsistent with some of the planning concepts that you've embraced and implemented in your underlying zoning ordinance that we comply with. We do meet those buffers. I believe Mr. Wesselowski testified to that at a prior meeting as to those specific dimensions and provided, but I can tell the board that we have looked at that as a team, we have calculated out those buffers, um, with those percentages of that section and believe that we certainly comply with those numerical dimensions as well as the spirit and intent of the quality of the buffer, because I think it's important as a planner that it's not just the distance in the buffer, it's also the quality of the buffer and what's in the buffer. And we have a berm of six feet in height with plantings that will be between five to seven feet on top of them, so I think that that is, again, an important consideration. The last thing that I would like to talk about from, um, HomeDell is some of the economic plan element goals and objectives in the master plan. And they talk about facilitating a positive business climate in Home in HomeDell and providing opportunities for non-residential development and local employment where appropriate. I find this to be an appropriate location. Another goal in the master plan is to strive for diversity in the township's economic base and jobs base so that HomeDell can better withstand the effects of changing business cycles and fluctuations in different industries. So I think that this is an opportunity to implement some of the goals in your economic plan element and I, you know, I understand that we have residential neighbors. I think the applicant has certainly been sensitive to that, has designed a plan that pulls the buildings hundreds of feet away from those and has not only considered but designed to the letter of the law when it comes to your ordinance with respect to buffering non-residential and residential uses. So if I could just have a minute to look through my notes, Chairman, and see if there's any points. I guess one other point that I wanted to make is that in the, um, med office residential district, the medical office residential district here in HomeDell, if you had a site that was five acres or less, you would allow that building to be thirty feet, um, in height. On sites that are greater than five acres, you allow a building up to sixty feet. And again, we're not zoned residentially, but I think that that gives you some scale as to the type of building that you would find appropriate on a site that's, uh, five acres or more, which the subject property is just over five acres. So I think that those are all of the points that I wanted to make in order to establish our statutory burden of proof for the grant of the D one use variance. I have taken significant care to go through not only your zoning ordinance, but your master plan and to visit the subject property and to review the application submission documents. And while I certainly understand, like in any application, when you put a shovel in the ground, whether this was an affordable housing site or something, you're going to have tree removal disturbance and you're going to have traffic associated with it. But the test is not to eliminate all of those things, but to balance and to make sure that you're providing, um, buffering and addressing and providing any mitigation needed to mitigate that, to come to the conclusion that there's no substantial detriment. So I can unequivocally tell the board that I believe this application meets its statutory burden of proof for the grant of a D one use variance. I have talked about particular suitability, positive and negative criteria, the Medici reconciliation, as well as the impact on the zone plan, and I believe, um, I believe that I've established the burden of proof to grant the variance relief.
Okay, uh, I think Kate, I'll let you go first before we do board members.
Sure.
She's she gave us a lot of testimony.
She did, and I thank you, Christine, that was very comprehensive. And I think we've also heard a lot of testimony from the other professionals as well. Um, so, you know, always helpful. Um, so I'm going to start at the beginning, and I was taking notes, and board members, please feel free to, if you have any questions, if I miss anything that you have a question about, you know, gonna somewhat address the board, I also have a couple of questions directly for Christine. Um, so first, just to go back, is that with regarding the height exception, um, again, no variant, these variants was needed, but I agree that this, that that exception for non-residential roof peaks is intended to apply to a situation like this. Again, the idea here is that HomeDell trying to trying to keep, uh, um, traditional style architecture and non-residential development. And again, architecture is something that, you know, they provided conceptual plans and that is something that you would be able to, um, get but dig much deeper into if this were if this were to be approved and there were a follow-up site plan application. So it's not the end of the line with the architecture or anything like that. So then the next thing I just wanted to touch on is the, um, you know, just starting with the positive criteria, again, we had, this is a D one variance. This is something that the board is, this is familiar with, this is the, um, the main purpose of the zoning board. And so I think that one of the thing, when, and I agree with everything that Christine said about, you know, the concepts of particular suitability, it it and there is case law to this effect, um, again, not to repeat, but, um, the idea is not that this property is the only one in HomeDell that's suitable for a medical office. It does not have to be the, um, you know, it it's not that this property is only suitable for medical office. It's somewhere in, it 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 really is just showing, and it's up to the board to evaluate this based on all of the testimony, whether there is something about this property, and those are the special reasons that we talk about, that makes it particularly suitable for the proposed use. Um, and, you know, there's basically when when someone's requesting a D one variance, there, you know, you don't hear it very often because it's rare, um, and I'm bringing this up because of, I'm going to get to the next thing with the other, the other zone, um, but sometimes there will be cases where a property is on a highway, property's changed over time, or to be, the area's changed over time, and the, an applicant will argue for a D one variance because they can claim it's undue economic hardship, essentially. You don't hear that very often because it's a very tough thing to prove. And that's not what, and it's when I bring that up because that's not what the applicant is arguing here. They're stating that because it's it's not necessarily that the circumstances have changed so much, but that because of, you know, that this is, this is on the parkway, it's a, it backs up to it, it backs up to one fourteen, that that is the particular suitability along with the surrounding uses, which, you know, I know that the property that's now, um, Sloan Kettering was all previously office use, now it's medical office use, that's also in Middletown. So, um, but when it comes to particular suitability, I again, just just keep in mind the fact that it doesn't have to be, this doesn't have to be the only thing that that's particularly suitable for this site, and this doesn't have to be the only site that's particularly suitable, but the board has to, you know, it really has to has to beat that burden. And I will, I can provide, um, I want to go pick up the language for that, too, which I will come back to shortly. Um, in terms of furthering the purposes of zoning, um, you know, we, uh, Miss Phone went over purpose A, medical office use promotes the general welfare, purpose G, it's efficient space for a variety of uses. Um, I don't take any exception with any of these. Um, I think that, you know, it's just, that's just one part of it, though, you know, that that's part of the special reasons, but it also has to show particular suitability, and that's the most important thing here for this D one variance case. Um, so I'm going to just move on to the comments about the negative criteria, and I think that, you know, the 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 O thirty office district, which is probably a zone that many of you have never heard of, I've barely heard of it, um, and that is, it does, it it is stated in the ordinance that it is specifically what Christine said. It permits low intensity office uses in response to the reduced desirability of residential uses at that intersection. That's the intersection of Route thirty-five and Laurel Avenue. Um, one thing I would say there is that, that yes, that is, that is the townships coming out and saying that some areas, when they become more commercialized, are no longer as appropriate for residential uses. Um, but here, I I think you have to look at here is whether, you know, look at the change, is is this really comparable? It's it's and that's up for the board to decide. Um, you know, if you look thirty years ago at the intersection of Route thirty-five and Laurel Avenue, it looked a lot different than it does now. Um, here, it does also looks different, um, maybe in a slightly different way. Um, but I think that, you know, that that is something that is a valid planning argument in many cases, where the particular suitability is because the circumstances have changed, the zoning's no longer appropriate, whatever that may, whatever that may mean in any specific case. So I am also going to, so now I'm going to skip ahead a little bit because I'm speaking of going back thirty years. Um, Christine, when you were citing the master plan, that was the two thousand and four master plan, correct? That way, which is the last time that HomeDell did a comprehensive master plan. Per the state statute, the municipality has to update their master plan every ten years. We last did it in twenty twenty, everything's above board with that, but the last time that that township did a comprehensive master plan, um, was two thousand and four.
So to be clear, the economic goals came out of the twenty twenty master plan.
Okay, yes.
The master plan consistency review came out of the two thousand and four because that's the last time that it was done.
Right, and so I just, you know, and and I I understand that's the last time it was done, it's not a required element of a reexamination report, and that's what our last two reexams have been. Um, but I just wanted, I just wanted to clear some things up here because I think that, you know, there, the border between Middletown and HomeDell is rather large, as is indicated there. And did you read the section, um, I'm sorry, it was, what is it, two thirty, two dash thirty-two? I think that there's a few, few discussions there, and I, and I don't disagree with what this says, but I just want to be, I just want the board to, you know, just understand that, A, this was written, um, twenty, not thirty, but twenty-one years ago, and that I just want to be clear that we're talking about specific borders. So I'm going to just, you know, go to three dash two dash thirty-two, sorry. Um, it's a, it's a big old document. Um, so, wait, sorry, is it yet to, am I at the right page? Okay, yes, here we go, sorry. So this section talks about, this is consistency with with Middletown's master plan, and I will just say that first off, I looked at, I looked at the zoning map, it looks like HomeDell is zoned the same as it was in two thousand and four in this area. I cannot speak for Middletown, I think it might be, because that was OR, whereas now, um, Sloan Kettering. But the way that this is written is that, um, south of the watershed divide, which is not a layman's term, but is, um, really where the Mahorris kind of goes into the, I believe, this, is it the Swimming River? I'm not sure, but it's right around here. Um, and Middletown's master plan identifies open space, farm, residential, quasi-public sites, and a single commercial site. The zoning is exclusively residential in Middletown except for a single commercial zone, OR, offices and laboratories located at the Garden State Parkway. As with commercial sites farther north in Middletown, this site contributes to traffic in both Middletown and HomeDell. So again, I just want to, this is twenty-five, twenty, twenty-one years old, um, but I I think that, you know, this is a very specific, at at the time, this was the only real commercial site there. So I just, I don't want to, I I don't, I I just want to be clear about what the master plan did say there and not to say, because I I think it's a little, I I think it was not totally correct that it said that, that Middletown, that HomeDell was fine with the zoning here. So, but again, well, say that on one hand, the other hand, this is from twenty-one years ago. So take with that what you will. So, but I will say, you know, that this, this is, that was, but, um, that was office research at that time, it's now, uh, medical office. And so again, when we look at changed circumstances, is that a better, it it does that make this site now more particularly suitable or less particularly suitable? Um, and, you know, that's, that's for the board's decision. Um, with regard to the discussion about the R forty A zone, um, and the location kind of on the fringe rather than fracturing a zone, um, and I I agree, I think, I think that there's often special considerations given from a planning perspective when you are, A, on the border of a municipality, B, next to, um, something like the Garden State Parkway that, you know, like it or not, is a, you know, it it it's a, it's, it disrupts the land use in that area. It's not, it's not continuous, um, you know, residential or anything else. You have the Parkway, you have fourteen, exit one fourteen. And then also, you know, you look what you have across the the town town line in Middletown. So, you know, that I think that that is, while there is, you know, some, there is residential property surrounding this, I agree that I think that there is a different consideration when you have something in this location. Not necessarily speaking that it makes it particularly suitable, but in terms of, you know, the impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I agree that there is a distinction here, um, with this property, um, or a property of this type, um, than if it was something that was fully in the midst of a residential neighborhood, for example. Um, let's see. The only, just a couple of questions, and I I have to admit, I didn't, I don't know the answer to this offhand. Christine, did you look at at all, I know you mentioned the other permitted conditional uses in this zone, things like houses of worship, et cetera?
Yes.
Would a house of worship be permitted on a lot of this size?
Yes.
Okay. And would any of the other conditional uses?
So I believe a house of worship has to be on, I want to say, four acres.
Yes, yes, yes.
So it would, right. The minimum lot area shall be four acres and the minimum frontage shall be a hundred and fifty feet. So I would say that, yes, we would, I believe, actually, I looked at that, I have the conditional use standards right here for house of worship, I believe we meet them all. So I do think that we would be able to have a house of worship here as an as-of-right use. As far as other conditional uses, I did look at that as well. Uh, let me just pull that up for a second. So other conditional uses in this zone include public utilities, wireless telecommunications, and towers, um, antennas and towers, and then churches or houses of worship.
Okay.
So I would say, yes, we could probably, certainly, I looked at the house of worship and that we comply with all of those. The other ones, yeah, I have them, I can look at them quickly.
I I think from a, from a, like, an activity perspective, house of worship is, is, that would be the most.
House of worship would be the most intense, that's why I looked at those specifically.
Yes, exactly.
And it would actually, the site is actually in excess of what, um, you would require because we're just over five acres and your zoning requires four for a house of worship.
Okay, so I I just, I just want to bring that up because it was mentioned as part of this, because, you know, this is not specifically a residential zone, no, no zones in HomeDell are specifically residential. But another thing to keep in mind is that a house of worship is, A, it's conditional use, so it is, you know, permitted in that sense. It also is, you know, inherently beneficial use, so, you know, just by existing, it meets the general welfare, so it is permitted in that zone. But I did just want to, you know, ju- just, just to touch on that point of what else could go here. And and just, just to clarify, also, um, public school, private schools are permitted, but that has a minimum of twenty acres, um, so that would not, the private school, for example, would not be permitted here, um, libraries, firehouses, the rest are generally public, um, you know, uh, public or municipal things. So that, I think, is all I have for my comments and my questions, but I'm happy to answer anything the board might have.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Because I'm understanding what you're saying with the house of worship, so that would be a per, that would be a permitted use regardless of the traffic concerns or any other concerns that they, for whatever reason, put a house of worship.
If if they met all the conditions, which, which, you know, they meet the the minimum acreage, I can't say, you know, without looking at a site plan, if they can meet everything with buffers or whatever, um, but if they met all of that, it would go to the planning board and they would just need site plan approval.
Still want to help with that.
Um, but if they did not meet one of those conditions, they would have to come to this board for a D three variance, which is a lower burden of proof than a D one. But that's, that's because the township committee, you know, by having that as a conditional use, they've essentially said that it's appropriate in the zone. And that, and I would note that houses of worship are permitted in all, I think, all zones in the municipality, not just residential zones, all zones.
Any other questions from board members?
Oh, I, sorry, I just have one more comment.
Oh, go ahead.
And I, and I, I know that this came up earlier and I just want to, um, we talked a little bit about from Jason's comment and then your comment regarding, you know, setting a precedent and things like that, and I don't want to dive too far into that, but I just want to be clear, and I I know that Mr. Alfieri knows this and I know the board, the board is aware, too, but, you know, the purpose of, you know, the the purpose of all these proofs that we as planners come out with and we say, you know, negative criteria, positive criteria, special reasons, that's what, you know, the zoning board's job here is to review all that and contemplate that, and that's what makes it not spot zoning. So if you do agree, if you, if you, if you think that the applicant has met their burden of proof, then there is, then that's what the, you know, that's what the statute is for and that's what. for, and that's what all of, you know, this, these proceedings are about. And so, but you don't have, you know, and that's why anyone can come here, we always say, anyone can come with any variance that they want, but that's what this review process is for. So it's, but, you know, especially with the D1 variance, it's, that's the most difficult variance to get, so that's why it's all a balance.
Did she address all your comments on your letter?
I believe so, I think all of my comments have been addressed by either Ms. Kaphon, or the engineer, or the applicant himself, because really, the, the main thing here is the, the D1 variance, so.
Okay. Any questions from our board? Anybody? Go ahead.
So, question on the neighboring property, so there, she showed up a picture where, I think it was like 400 feet to the residential structure, and it surpassed those two, I think, barn structures that we were referring to. If they, without coming before any sort of barn, any sort of boards, just wanted to use as their land allows right now, if they wanted to make those barns into bedrooms or whatever, is that allowed? Can they do that?
It's hard to say without knowing exactly what's going on on the property, because if it's a, if it's, if they have right to farm protection or something like that, they can do that, but I believe that only one dwelling is permitted, except for maybe seasonal, but in very specific, very limited situations, but one dwelling is permitted per farm property in Hometown.
Okay, thank you.
Just want a little bit of clarification on using some things as suitability. In Hometown, in a lot of the R40 residential areas, there are homes that are really adjacent to the Garden State Parkway. You can hear the traffic on the Garden State Parkway when you sit in some of these people's backyards. So, I'm looking at it, is that suitability to say that those also could be, come before us for variance? I'm not saying, and I'm not trying to say project to anything else, but we generally have, Hometown is residential, there's a lot of R40 here, that's what makes our town the town it is. And if we looked at everything about it, there are plenty of R40s that are up against the highway. Does that mean that that's suitable to change the zoning? That's number one. Number two, about the traffic on 35, making a site not suitable, are we saying that this site is already full of traffic, so therefore not suitable to be considered still a resident, residential? Because then I'm concerned that we're going to add to a traffic situation if it's already considered a busy intersection that makes it suitable to change the zoning. So in two cases, the suitability somehow is making me not feel comfortable that this is a good enough reason to change from an R40.
Christine, you wanna, do you wanna take, take this one?
Yes.
Because I think, I think with particular suitability, I understand you, the backing up to the Parkway was not the only reason she said, but I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, let Christine answer that one.
It was, so certainly, there are, if you look at the zoning map, right, that we entered, I forget what we marked it, but the, the Garden State Parkway, A7, so we bring A7 back up, the Garden State Parkway traverses almost the entirety of Hometown Township, in essentially a north-south direction, right? So I agree with you, there's a lot of zones that back up, but what, there are not a lot of them, there are not a lot of them that back up to an interchange with a toll booth behind them, and have that traffic associated with them, or those impacts, so, right, and that front on a county road, so they are more traditional platted subdivisions that don't have the same circumstances as this property. And as far as the O30 zone, the O30 zone talks about, and it uses the word, a heavily-used intersection. So certainly, this is immediately adjacent to the interchange of the Garden State Parkway. So there's absolutely a parallel to the planning concept there, that you, in your, in your zoning, found that for reduced desirability for residential uses. Many of the lots that you're talking about are not located at intersections, they absolutely are not. When you look at the zoning map, and you look at A7 in evidence, the lion's share of the balance of the single-family homes that back up to the Garden State Parkway, and I agree with you, there are quite a few of them, are not at intersections, and that is a difference or a distinction.
That same argument makes me that if you believe that's a heavy-trafficked intersection, then you putting an office building there is going to add to the traffic, and are you going to make it worse, which is my concern, which I have heard testimony saying that it wouldn't. But if you're making that argument for suitability, that it's already heavily trafficked, then we've got a problem here.
I, I don't think we do have a problem, and that's why, as part of our case, we provided testimony from Mr. Ray at the last hearing. Mr. Ray provided to you, in response to your traffic engineer's request, he provided an additional gap study, where he went out again, and I believe his gap study culminated in a paragraph, and I don't wanna speak for him, and I'm certainly not a traffic engineer, but I can read you the concluding paragraph from his report, because I have it. So if you give me a minute, I will find that, and I will read to you the paragraph that he concluded with. And this is his January 21st, '25 report. I'm reading from page two of this report, which is part of the record. Again, it should be noted that there are many gaps in excess of 10 seconds, which will permit multiple exiting movements to be safely made from the driveway. The overall capacity for enabling left-turn movements out of the site driveway is well in excess of the anticipated 54 left turns during the afternoon peak hour. So part of the reason the planner testifies last is because my testimony has to be based on the foundation of other professionals, right? And one of the things that we do, when we have a D1 use variance, the reason we have a traffic engineer is because we need to demonstrate to you that the traffic in the site can function safely and efficiently. And in my opinion, you have uncontroverted testimony in the record from a, a, a traffic engineer who has been testifying for decades in the state of New Jersey, was qualified and found to be an expert, issued a supplemental report to address your professionals' concerns, and he culminated that, again, the capacity for turning movements out of the driveway is well in excess of the anticipated 54 left turns during the afternoon peak hour. So what that means is that he found that there's gonna be 54 turning movements during the peak hour. So in the busiest hour, we're gonna have 54 left-turning movements, and he, his findings are that they can be safely made, and that the overall capacity has many gaps. So, and yes, we will have more traffic, that's an undisputed fact, there's no doubt about that. We will have more traffic. Anytime you introduce a shovel into the ground, you're going to have more traffic, right? So, but, does that statement lead us to conclude that this is gonna have a substantial negative impact, when we have a traffic engineer who did supplemental studies to address your board's concern, and he finds that the courtesy gaps, or the gaps, that the many gaps in excess of 10 seconds are well in excess of the anticipated 54 left turns? So, and this is why we look at all these things as planners.
Except his testimony, and I, you know, I agree with his figures, but when you were talking about the O30, I don't think you were talking about making the land not desirable because it was unsafe because of course the traffic conditions, you just talked about the amount of traffic, and that's what I'm saying. Like, I, I heard you, but I was surprised that you were using that as an argument for suitability, was the amount of traffic making the property less desirable. I'm not questioning the safety, and I, I understand his testimony, so it's fine.
The argument is that your O30 zone in the purpose cites reduced desirability of residential uses. So it recognizes that at heavily-used intersections, residential uses might be less desirable. So that was the point. The point is that your own planning documents acknowledge that to be an acceptable planning concept of having, not having residential uses at heavily-trafficked intersections, and that was the point to be made.
Francine, if I could just offer in this to everyone else on the board too, when you're kind of think weighing this, I think these are kind of, we're, we're looking at two separate things here, which, one is that, is there an amount of traffic or commercial activity, because it doesn't really say, doesn't say, you know, that the traffic is backed up, nobody wants to live here, it just says there's a lot of activity there, it's heavily used. The fact that that, what is it, sorry, what's the word, it says it's normal, for, sorry, for, for residential uses, no longer desirable.
Yes.
So, so what-
Reduced desirability of residential uses at this heavily-trafficked intersection.
So, so I think, I think my read of this, or way I always hear this, is that, that's one, that's a statement saying that, for whatever reason, the activity of this intersection, including the change in uses, the traffic, et cetera, has led to reduced residential desirability. And, you know, I don't know when that was written, I don't know what that was based on, but that's what that says. Then, then there's the, then the other, the other flip side of that is what, you know, you're looking at, and what we're, what you're typically weighing with a use variance, which is whether the additional traffic from this project will have a, you know, will have a negative impact. And I think that those are two separate things, because, you know, the, the traffic engineer, for example, John Ray can't come back here next time and say, this is the amount of traffic that will make people not wanna live, you know, that'll only lead to an undesirable location. That's, you know, that's, that's, it's, it's kind of more ephemeral, I would say, it's, it's subjective, but the testimony about, you know, the amount of traffic that this site may give off, the way it impacted will have on the roadways, the kind of testimony that this board hears all the time from traffic engineers, that, that's a more, that's a more quantitative, quantitative, that's the numbers one, quantitative type of thing. So I think, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, it's, it's on, when you look at it both ways, but it's like, but it's, it's really measuring two different things, and the first one can't really be measured, in my opinion, which is, you know, what makes it less desirable.
Okay, anybody else? Jason? John? Got any questions? I don't know if they're there. Okay, all right, Mr. Simon, you're up, and we're gonna have a hard stop at 9:30.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, I mean, I have questions-
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute, I'm trying to please get off the mic.
Do you have any questions, John, or Jason?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted a clarification, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I understood the testimony provided by the planner about the, I don't know, was it called a partnership with Middletown, when we're doing zoning and, and variances with, with Middletown, and we're sharing this one road together? And Marty, I guess this is more from Marty, or, and/or Kate, is, is this an inherently beneficial use?
No.
I remember we had a lawsuit against Hometown from Middletown, when we were discussing the location right across the other side of the Parkway, regarding traffic issues.
Jason, 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 I'm gonna stop you right here, because I, I think you're getting it a little too, too ahead of it. The, what Christine was citing, what she was quoting from the master plan, about the relationship between Hometown's zoning and Middletown's zoning, and that is a statutory requirement from the municipal land use law, that every municipal master plan has to evaluate your zoning and your land use, your proposed land use plan, with all of the municipalities around it. So this document also contained the same things for Coltsnecht, and Falls, and Falls, Hazlett, et cetera. So, so it's, it's not, it, it wasn't something that Middletown had any participation in, that, those, that review, if that was, is that what you're asking?
Okay, so the, so the traffic concerns that they had with the property on the other side of the Parkway, I believe was-
Different application, that was a totally different application, and they, and they, I mean, it's public record, they, they formally objected to that application, which they are not doing here.
Okay, does that answer your question, Jason?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anything else?
I think I'm good for now. John?
John?
Yeah, I'm okay for now.
Go ahead, John. You're okay, you said? Okay, Mr. Simon, you're up.
Because I'm probably not gonna finish.
In a half an hour?
Yeah, within a half hour, so I just wanna give you fair warning about that. And I know we have to bring back the traffic person for purposes of their parking supplemental, and I'd like to take a look at, you know, the exhibit, particularly that distance exhibit that they just presented for the first time tonight. I'm happy to get started.
No, no, I just wanted to-
Mr. Simon, do you have, do you have a affirmative planning witness that you're bringing, or anything?
I absolutely do, yes.
Okay, okay, that's what, okay.
I was gonna ask you that question, do you have witnesses that you're gonna be presenting?
I, I, yes, definitely.
Okay, so Marty knows all this, yet?
Yes.
We just mentioned it, we talked about it in the hall before.
Okay.
But we, we would like to at least use the time a lot of-
Sure, I agree, just wondering.
We'll use it for a half an hour.
Okay.
All right, and then you're gonna have to bring back, because who was the witness that you, we stopped you last time?
Traffic.
Traffic.
It was John Ray, I think.
So you got traffic, and you're gonna have more for the planner then, at another meeting?
Probably.
And, and, as relates to John Ray, his, his questioning is gonna relate solely to the parking study he did for other medical uses, because otherwise, we completely, we completely-
Mr. Alfieri is 100% correct.
So that'll be pretty great.
All right, so the next meeting, whenever that is, it looks like-
Do you know when the next meeting is? Because I wanna make sure Mr. Ray's-
Maybe June 4th.
June 4th.
Well, let's first make sure we're available.
But anyway, at that meeting, that means that we'll start off that meeting with both your professionals, and Mr. Simon following up all his questions, right?
Yes, good year, I can come back now. Is my calendar?
What about the traffic person?
I'm gonna call him before we leave.
All right.
If, unless he's testifying in Jackson, he won't pick up his phone, but if he can, he will.
All right, so let us know, so, I don't know, we'll have to find that out.
He's not good with-
Yeah, I, I-
Are you available March, June?
I have a conflict on June 4th.
Oh, okay.
The next available is July 16th. I can do that.
You can do July 16th?
Yes.
You can't take vacations in the summer.
18th is already booked.
If they didn't notice it.
Hold on a minute. Did you give us notice?
We just, we have one other one on an earlier date, but she's trying to, we're trying to figure out if they gave notice already, for the, that would be May 21st's. So we have three potential dates, May 21st, June 4th, or July 16th. All the rest of the dates between now and then have other matters. But May 21st may have something that, Rena's trying to decide. You didn't get the notice?
I can't do May 21st.
Oh, you can't, nevermind.
July 16th.
Let's do a special meeting. I don't think you want to.
All right, so you wanna figure this out later, and let Mr. Simon keep going? Or start going?
Yes.
Are you ready?
I am, I'm just putting it in my phone, so I can-
Okay.
I'm ready now.
Do you wanna sit down? Because you're gonna be there for a half an hour, I wouldn't want you to sit down.
Yes, yes, I love it. Christine, good evening.
Just try to have that mic next to you, this way they can listen from the back.
There's a second, yeah, use the other.
Christine, just keep that mic near your mouth.
Yep.
I'm looking for our attorney, I wanna make sure he gives more.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna, uh-
He left.
Yeah, you may wanna wait a minute.
No, we have to make sure attorney's here.
Let me wait for him.
Yes, please wait.
Thank you.
Of course.
Can we move that? So there's more room for it. Yeah. So, Rob, you might be able to move that table, if you want, your own table, and just kinda wheel it in the middle, do you care? Okay.
Okay, sounds good now.
We're trying to make you friends, might be really close.
You're using up his half hour.
It's okay. Ms. Kaphon, good evening. When will you first retain for this application?
I don't know the exact date, Mr. Simon, it's been, it's been a while. I would say at least over a year, at least a year.
Did you participate in the design of the variance plan before it was submitted to the board?
Did I participate in the design of it?
Yeah, in other words, did you provide input on what ultimately was the design of the variance plan that was submitted to this board for this application?
Yes, we had a number of team conference calls, so we talked about things like buffering, so yes, I would say, my office definitely had influence over some of the buffering and, and some of the site features.
Okay, but in term, other than buffering, and that's why I asked you when you were retained, whether you had input in terms of the design of the variance plan, where the buildings were located, where the parking was located, driveways, et cetera? Or were you retained after that was submitted?
So we generally don't design the site plan, that's the engineer's responsibility. So I don't recall the exact date that we were, we were retained on this.
Did you conduct an investigation of- Did you conduct an investigation of the property history as to any prior development applications for this site?
No.
Are you aware of whether this site was subject to an application before the planning or zoning boards in the past, prior to this application?
No.
And, um, you, when you were providing your credentials, which are extensive admittedly, to this board, um, you, you talked about participating as a planner before this Board of Adjustment in connection with the development application. Do you, do you recall where that was?
Well, there were several, so.
Okay, and which, which ones do you recall?
So most recently, probably the self-storage facility on Highway thirty-five.
Any others that you can recall for Homedale, for Board of Adjustment?
Certainly, we, I've been before the Homedale Board of Adjustment previously. I, you know, I've been practicing for decades, so I'd have to go back and look at my files.
One on Roberts Road and Homedale Road.
Yes, there's, there's been a few of them, a few gas stations.
D variants.
Yes, Justin from my office was here recently. Um, we've had a few cases here.
And, um, any use variance, uh, applications that you or Justin from your office participated in involving property in the R forty A or forty B zones?
Again, Mr. Simon, I would never do that analysis for this application because it would be irrelevant. So the fact, though, these cases are all fact-sensitive, so what was relevant and important in those cases would, in, in my opinion, have no bearing on this application. So unless we were going for an interpretation, which would certainly have a binding effect on future applications, they wouldn't be relevant, they're for different uses, so it, it, it wouldn't be relevant to my analysis.
Do you, does that answer, did, do you recall whether you participated in any Board of Adjustment application for use variance concerning property in the R forty A or forty B zone?
Again, I may have. I don't recall the specifics of those zones, and I, I wouldn't have looked at that to come here tonight, 'cause it's irrelevant to this application.
Okay. Um, you, uh, reviewed the zoning ordinance in Homedale in preparation for your testimony, correct?
Yes.
And there are other zones in Homedale Township that permit, uh, medical office use as of right, correct?
Yes.
And do you recall how many different zones permit that use?
No.
Um, you talked about, and we'll get into this a little bit later, you, you spent some time discussing the O thirty, uh, office district. Do you recall whether the O thirty office district permits, uh, medical office use as of right?
It does not.
Does not?
Well, it permits professional and business office, it does not say medical office.
Um, do you recall which zones permit medical office as of right?
There's a medical office district that allows it, but I, I'm not sure where it's permitted as of right.
Elsewhere, correct?
Yes, 'cause as I stated in the particular suitability, we don't need to rule out where other sites might be appropriate, right? That's not one of the burden of proof before the board. So we don't go through the analysis on this or on any other application as to where you could do this, because it's not relevant to the board's findings.
So despite the Price versus Emegy case in Supreme Court from 2013, you don't believe that that analysis is relevant to this board's determination for this use variance?
I don't believe it is, no. I don't believe you have to rule out other sites. I do not believe that's what that case found. And I believe the board's planner concurred with me, and when she talked to her board about suitability, I believe it was her concurring with me that you don't have to do that. You don't have to demonstrate that it's uniquely suitable for this, nor do you have to rule out other uses or other sites where it would be appropriate.
Mr. Simon, do you want our planner to comment on any of your questions?
No, not at this time. And, and in fact, um, I would respectfully ask that certainly, um, the board's planner await, you know, our professional planning testimony before providing any comments to, uh-
All right, thank you.
To the board. So you, um, have not done any type of studies to determine various vacancy rates for any medical office buildings in Homedale, correct?
No. Correct, that I didn't do. Correct, meaning I didn't do it.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. And, did, did you, um, so Memorial Sloan-Kettering, you talked about that in your testimony, located across the street. That's, that's actually a permitted use in Middletown's, um, OR zone, correct?
Yes.
And do you know, do you know for how long that property, um, became, Memorial Sloan-Kettering? Approximately what year?
It's been a couple of years. I don't know the exact year that that became MSK.
Do you, do you know for how long that property had, uh, office development on it?
For years. Again, I'm not sure how long, but it's been office for years, decades.
And the same thing for having a fully controlled intersection with a traffic light, correct?
To the best of my knowledge, and I've lived in the area for decades.
Did you do any investigation to determine, uh, whether the Memorial Sloan-Kettering properties within the sewer service area?
I did not.
And there's, um, based on your, uh, zoning map, I don't remember what we, what we marked it, but-
A seven.
Okay, A seven zoning map, um, there are no other zones in this portion of the township that permit office use or medical office use as of right, correct?
So when you say this portion of the township, do you mean the subject property and the sites immediately contiguous to it?
The sites in the, in the area of this property, yes.
Then yes, I would agree, they don't permit med office.
And, um, the, you talked about the M Medical District, that's located approximately a four-mile driving distance from this property, correct?
I don't know the driving distance, the comparison, I don't know the driving distance, the comparison was on the height that that zone would allow, based on the acreage that you had, so it wasn't on proximity.
Okay, but you didn't do any studies in terms of how many acres that zone comprises, or how many medical office buildings are currently, um, up and running, uh, in that zone, correct?
No, because that wasn't the point that I was making. The point that I was making was that zone allows for thirty-foot tall buildings on sites that are less than five acres, and sixty-foot tall buildings on sites that are greater than five acres. So it was a scale point, not a proximity point.
And, and again, you have no idea about vacancy rates or, or other uses of those medical office buildings in that M District, correct?
I did not do that study.
And you didn't, uh, your development team nor you provided any type of needs analysis for medical office use in the, uh, R forty A zone, right?
That is not one of the required proofs to substantiated D one use variance, and we did not provide that.
With regard to, um, actually, can you put up, even though I haven't seen it, the, that, that exhibit that showed the, the distances, please? Thank you.
I can't do it, but Mr. Ross can do it.
Ms. Kafunk, if you notice, I did not, I did not look at you and ask you to do that.
I can cause it to be done.
Yes. Uh, can you just make it a little bit, uh, more magnified, just so I can?
For particular areas?
Uh, it just, yeah, we can maybe start to, you know, whatever that is, the, uh, the west or northwest? Yeah. So, um, those distances that were, uh, dimensioned, and, and by the way, uh, even though it was your testimony, that, those dimensions weren't done by you per se, that was done by the, uh, the engineer for the project, correct?
Correct.
And, um, with regard to the dimensions that you're showing, um, from the office building, um, were there dimensions that were done from the, uh, commercial parking area, um, or, I'm sorry, driveway area on the site? I don't see those.
Um, Michael, can you make that, I, I don't know why I can't do that. No, I mean, to, were there dimensions from the commercial parking area?
Yeah.
No, but I mean, you can clearly see where the commercial parking area is, so the office building, the office building is actually further east than the parking, right? The parking, based on this, which is, I believe is A eight in evidence? Is this A, no, there's a-
Eight, yeah.
Yeah, it, the buildings are further away than the parking area.
And what about the driveways? Driveways are closer to the parking, uh, to, to those residences, correct?
A little bit, yes.
Yeah. And then, um, there, there was some testimony provided, I think it was by you, Ms. Kafunk, about, uh, oh no, I'm sorry, it was by the engineer, it's my fault, about a bank parking area to the, uh, west of the office bill, medical office building on the left. Do you know approximately where that would be located as we're looking at this?
I do know where approximately that, where that would locate, so it's almost, there, the bank parking plan had like two parking fields to it. One parking field would be approximately located in this, uh, location where I'm showing.
Yeah.
So I do know where those bank parking fields are located, and one would be, um, due west, essentially, of this parking space here, shown on A eight, and the other parking fields would also be, um, accessed off of this drive, and in the general location, um, west of where this drive is. So this area that I'm showing the cursor on, um, approximately-
So, so that's where the trees are, are located there to the west?
Correct, it's shown as green space on A eight, but that's the approximate location, um, of the bank parking field.
And no dimensions have been provided for the distance from that bank parking field to those homes, correct?
Um, not on this plan, no.
And, um, with regard to, um, those, we're starting with those properties to the, to the left or to the west, um, what zone are those properties located in? Is that R forty A or R forty B?
R forty A.
And in the R forty A zone, um, what, those, the land immediately adjacent to your client's property, those would be considered rear yards of those residential properties, correct?
Yes.
And are you aware for the R forty A zone, what the, uh, rear yard setback requirement for, uh, principal and/or accessory structures is?
Um, I'll tell you in a second. Twenty-five feet.
So, um, so within twenty-five feet of the common lot line, uh, to those residential property, shared with those residential properties, um, those residences could put in accessory structures such as a, a pool or, or a patio as of right, correct?
Well, no, because that's the principal, the principal building setback is twenty-five feet from the rear yard.
What's, what's, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, what is the accessory structure setback for the R forty A zone? And I'm particularly, um, thinking about a pool or a patio.
So certainly it would be somewhat less than twenty-five feet. I don't know offhand, but if the rear yard setback is twenty-five, then a pool could certainly go in the rear yard or an accessory structure, so something less than twenty-five feet.
And, um, going to the, the property to the, um, and, and by the way, what are the, what's the acreage of those two properties to the, uh, to the northwest, do you know?
I don't.
And I think there was a, um, if we can turn now to, to, like, the property to the south, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to put this upon you.
No, no, my, that's, that's, don't-
Yeah.
I'm the one who should apologize. So, um, so now we're looking, um, moving the cursor to the distance from the, uh-
Sorry.
Med- yeah, it's okay. From the medical buildings to the, um, to residential buildings to, to the south, correct? So again, um, you didn't provide, or the engineer didn't provide dimensions from the ingress egress driveway to those properties, correct?
No, that's not, well, it's not from the ingress egress drive, but if you look at the, um, the easternmost line, the three hundred and sixty, the three hundred and sixty-five foot dimension is from our corner, which is actually further, or, um, not, not to the driveway, but we show it to our, our property line. And then the driveway is fur- is a little, uh, further away from that. And then the other two dimensions, the six hundred and eighty-two and seven hundred and sixty-five, those dimensions are to, um, from the buildings to the residential use.
And I think you answered the question that was asked of you regarding, um, whether those, the, the buildings that are immediately abutting or adjacent to your client's property can be converted to uses other than what they're used for currently. You just, you just don't know in terms of density and, and use, whether they could be converted as of right to residences, correct?
Well, I think, uh, Planner Keller answered that.
Right, I'm saying, you, you, in terms of your testimony, you don't know one way or another, correct?
Well, do I know that they could be converted? I mean, anything can be converted. Um, as of right, you're allowed one principal use in that zone, so in my opinion, unless they were used for a farm, because there are certainly, certain allowances, if you have a farm, an active farm, to use those for farm help or whatnot, so it's, you're asking me a broad-brust question with no context, no specifics of the application. So it depends on what they're gonna be used for, if they can be used.
Do, do you know what the current use of that property is?
It's a farm.
Um, do you know what, what kind of farming activity is conducted at that property?
I'm not certain what, what they find.
And, um, did you do an, an analysis either for that property or even the subject property to determine, um, how many residences could be constructed as of right on either one of those properties?
I did not.
And you didn't perform any type of, um, residential layout for either, um, the subject property, which is subject to this application, or the property to the south, correct?
Correct.
Four-minute warning.
You know, I'll do, let me do this. So, um, with regard to your, your testimony about, about the height, just so, just so I'm clear, the applicant is not proposing to change the, um, rendering elevation of the height that was submitted to the board as part of this application, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Um, do you know whether the applicant submitted any elevations or floor plan, architectural elevations or floor plans in connection with this application?
I don't believe so.
And, um, you, you talked about the O three office district and the intersection of Route thirty-five and Laurel Avenue. Um, there's no recommendation in either the master plan or reexamination report to rezone this property to any different zone, whether it's O thirty or any other zone, correct?
No, and I certainly didn't state that there was.
And in terms of, um, your, the zoning map that was provided, and the, whether it's R forty A or R forty B, did you identify how many, uh, properties or residentially, I'm sorry, let me back up, residentially zoned properties are located adjacent to or abutting the Garden State Parkway?
No, because I think A eight speaks for itself. It's, it clearly demonstrates that the subject property, that, and I believe I was questioned by this, by, um, by one of the board members, um, Board Member Campus, is that, yes, and I acknowledge, there are many, many lots that back up to the Garden State Parkway. There are not many lots that back up to a Garden State Parkway interchange, though. And as I said, my direct testimony was, that is a difference with a distinction.
Okay, in terms of the interchange versus the Garden State Parkway, um, do you know whether Mr. Ray or anyone on the development team did a traffic or, um, trip generation analysis comparing the interchange to just, um, vehicles traveling back and forth in the Garden State Parkway abutting those residential properties?
I think that question would be best directed to Mr. Ray.
Oh, you-
Last question.
You know what, I'm gonna wait. I'll stop here.
Okay.
Yeah. Because then I'm gonna go into a different area.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so did we come up with a date, everybody?
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth? Is that the date? Where is, uh, where is he? Oh, over there. Changed sides. Okay, so this application will be carried till July sixteenth without further notice. Thank you, everybody, for attending today. Okay. We have nothing else, right, on the agenda?
And the website will be updated for the next meeting, in, in case there is anything missing on it.
All right, uh, any professional report?
Sal, Sal, if your, uh, witness could bring, like, those small versions of that for the board next time? Yeah, that'd be great. Whatever those were that we did today.
Okay, any other, uh, professional, uh, comments, professional?
No.
Nothing? Nothing? Can I have a motion to close? Gene, second? Okay, meeting closed.
Thank you, have a good night.